Okay.
Recording in progress.
Hello, welcome everyone to the Monday, October 11th meeting of the Pacifica City Council. We're going to call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And I'll request roll call from the city clerk and then the city clerk will provide some notes on the meeting format for tonight's meeting.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Butterlass.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Here.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Here.
And this meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953 as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain profane states of emergency. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. This meeting may also be observed live on local TV Channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/live. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation by Zoom. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button or star nine if you're calling in to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications when the mayor calls on that item. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and allow you to unmute after calling your screen name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting but will be made part of the written record and provided to council members. The format of this meeting may be altered or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
Thank you very much. I'm going to salute the flag and then I have a note on tonight's agenda. Mayor Protem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like council to consider moving an item on the agenda. And if that is acceptable, I'll need a motion in a second. This is item 13, which has to do with establishment of an edible food recovery program. And the request is to move that item to the top just after our public hearing so that we could accommodate the schedule of some participants from the San Mateo County Office of Sustainability, who would be here to attend and support and answer questions that we may have.
So moved.
Second.
The motion by councilmember O'Neal, seconded by councilmember Butterlass. I'll take the roll call vote, starting with councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Butterlass.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously, moving item number 13 to the first consideration item on the agenda.
All right, thank you very much. Just one point of clarification on that then. Will that become item 10? And then what is currently item 10 will be item 10A?
We can number it that way, or just that may be easy. It's just correct.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. It would become item...
10.
10 would become item 10A.
Very well, thank you. All right, next on our agenda is a special presentation from Amy Linehan, the Public Affairs Specialist, and Millie Tolleson from Sam Trans to present to us information on Reimagine Sam Trans.
Good evening, council. Amy Linehan, Public Affairs Specialist with Sam Trans. Thank you for having us tonight and allowing us to give you an update on our Reimagine Sam Trans project. I am going to turn things over to my colleague Millie, and she's going to go through most of the presentation with you. We are happy to answer any questions you have at the end. Thanks again.
Good evening. I'm Millie Tolleson. I'm the manager of strategic planning for Sam Trans, and it's very nice to be back with you all. About six months, I believe, since we last spoke about this project. I know you have a very packed agenda tonight, so I'm going to be as brief as I can be. Next slide, please. Sarah, are you advancing the slides?
It should be on the agenda slide. Is that what you're seeing?
No, I'm just still seeing the title slide.
Okay, one moment. Let me... Let me fix that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's always good to like break the awkward silence, so I'm really happy that you guys are here tonight. I'm looking forward to your presentation. I know it's really important for us to hear about what's going on with Sam Trans, especially now that school's back in and kids are back in school and yeah. So I look forward to what you have to share with us.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess I can just go ahead and break the silence a little more and just let you know kind of where we are. So when we were presenting to you in the spring, we had the three different bus network alternatives. And we got a lot of great input on those alternatives and those different options. And we spent the summer piecing together one new recommended bus network. So we are reaching a very exciting sort of conclusion of the project and excited to share what we think is really quite responsive to the public input that we got, particularly in Pacifica for the new network. So let's see if we can... There we go. Okay, great. So this may look like a long agenda, but again, I'm going to kind of breeze through it, give you a little bit of project background and really dive into the recommended network and the changes that would be in store in Pacifica and talk about the third and final round of outreach, which we kicked off last week. And this is really the final kind of opportunity for the community and all of our stakeholders to give input on this, the recommended changes. So next slide, please. So again, this is our project timeline. Like I said, we're nearing the end. We are just coming off a summer of really developing this recommended new bus network and beginning the third and final round of public outreach. And we do expect our board or hope that our board will take action to adopt the new bus system in February and then begin implementation next summer. Next slide. So just to recap of everything that we did last spring, we had four multilingual public meetings, more than 20 community pop-up events, 40 presentations to various stakeholders, city staff, and elected bodies, meetings with our advisory groups and our bus operators, and four different partnerships with community-based organizations. Next slide. And as I mentioned, we had these three different bus network alternatives, which is what we were showing the public last spring. They each had sort of a distinct theme to them, and we asked folks which one was really resonating the most with them as far as their correct sort of or their vision for the future of the Sam Trans bus system. And I think interestingly, people are very split, somewhat interestingly, somewhat not surprisingly, because we know that people want many different things out of public transportation. But you know, what we really took from this was even more, we knew even more that we needed to really mix and match pieces from each of the alternatives that we thought were most complimentary and were really the best and most well-received by the community. Next slide. So looking, I wanted to kind of pull together what were the key themes of things that we heard from folks in Pacifica and about routes in Pacifica. And one thing that we heard was really a desire for weekend service within the Lindamar community. Right now, the Flex Pacifica service does not run on weekends. And so there were requests for weekend service. We heard a lot about the importance of retaining or even expanding service in the Sharp Park area and the importance of keeping a connection to Cerro Monte Center. We asked folks about sort of the trade-offs between different BART stations. If we were going to give them a connection to BART, which one was preferred between Daly City and Colma? And Daly City BART was really the preferred location. People pointed out that in, you know, normally it gets twice as much BART service as Colma heading north into San Francisco. And a lot of support for more frequent midday and again, weekend service. And this was really a theme that we heard throughout the county was a lot of, I think especially with changing commute patterns and changing work-from-home patterns through the pandemic, a lot of interest in expanding the service that we provide in the off-peak times, so including midday and weekends. Next slide, please. So looking at creating the new network, and you can go ahead to the next one. We took a lot of different inputs. In addition to community engagement, we looked at ridership and productivity. We did an equity need analysis to determine the areas of our county that we consider our equity priority areas. We developed guiding principles and used market research and market analysis to put together this preferred or, you know, recommended new bus network. Next slide. And we identified three sort of overall objectives for the network. We feel and our board has told us it's very important to prioritize equity, prioritizing buses and service to our high-need communities from perhaps underutilized or routes that are duplicative with one another. We're also striving to be more efficient, creating faster, more reliable service through more direct and then sometimes consolidated routes. And finally, providing expanded all-day service and more service to transit hubs and job centers. Next slide. So this is a system map that shows frequency on weekdays. And I think the key thing to know here is that red lines are the most frequent routes, every 15 minutes. Blue lines operate every 20 or 30 minutes. Green lines operate every 60 minutes, and yellow lines are some of our peak-only routes. And I have some more maps to show and some more detail about Pacifica coming up. But I think one thing that we're excited about is bringing a couple more routes up to that red every 15-minute service category and bringing also a number of routes up from every 60 minutes to every 20 or 30 minutes. So we really are trying to increase the frequency where we can. We're not recommending any bus routes to run, you know, every five minutes or every eight minutes, but we're doing what we can to get people at least, you know, every 30-minute service all day long. Next slide, please. And this map is showing where we are proposing weekend service improvements and did want to call out a couple things here specifically for Pacifica. On weekends, we're recommending that Route 110 bumps up from every 60 minutes to every 30 minutes. Route 110 currently operates between Lindamar Park and Ride and Daly City BART. Heading south from Pacifica, we're also recommending that Route 17, which runs from Lindamar down to Half Moon Bay, would run every 60 minutes instead of every 120 minutes. We don't really think any bus routes should run every 120 minutes. So we at least would like the weekends to run every 60 minutes on that route. And we are proposing that weekend service in the Lindamar area via an extension of our Route 110. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a future slide. Next slide. So looking at what we think are really service enhancements for Pacifica, more frequent midday service, again on that Route 110 between Lindamar and Daly City, so that would operate every 30 minutes on weekends and all day long on weekdays. More frequent express service between Lindamar and Daly City BART, that's Route 118. So that would run every 30 minutes during peak, that one would be during peak times. And the Lindamar neighborhood would be connected directly to Daly City and would get new service on weekends. So we're actually recommending to discontinue the Flex Pacifica as a standalone route and instead extend Route 110 along the exact same alignment as the Flex Pacifica, but it would be part of the 110 instead of a standalone circulator route. And this would allow us to again, provide more frequency in the Lindamar community, that weekend service, and it would also be a new one-seat ride. So people within Lindamar wouldn't have to transfer at the Park and Ride to get up to Daly City or BART station. So that's kind of a notable change. And again, that more frequent weekend service on Route 17. Next slide, please. And sort of on the trade-offs or reallocation side of things, I think I talked about this last time, but we are proposing to remove a couple deviations on Route 17. So right now, Route 17 cuts over on Sunshine Valley Road, and I'm, I actually, I don't think you can see my cursor because I'm not sharing. But Sunshine Valley Road, currently the Route 17 deviates off of Highway 1 to serve that area, and it's, gets very low ridership. Most of the ridership on that corridor is school service, which would remain. But Highway 17, Route 17, we're proposing to keep it really on Highway 1 so that we can bump up, do some frequency improvements on the route. And Route 112 would be shortened at Sharp Park. So that route would no longer duplicate Route 110 between Sharp Park and Lindamar. That's an example of kind of that reduced duplication that we're trying to pursue in order to be able to offer more frequent service on certain routes. So Route 112 would just operate between Sharp Park, Cerro Monte, and Colma BART. Again, that elimination of the Flex Pacifica, but the whole fixed route would be covered by Route 110, but it would no longer flex. So right now, that route, you can call and ask it to deviate off the route up to half-mile. It would no longer do that. But we've actually looked at the data and we believe there's one person asking it to do that right now and not that that one person is not very important. But that does not seem to be a very utilized feature of that route right now. Route 140, which serves Pacific Manor and Edgemar area right now, would be deleted. That portion would be deleted due to low ridership. People would still be able to connect to the 110 at that, in that area, but the Route 140 would no longer serve that area. And finally, the consolidation of school routes 16 and 49, which serve Terra Nova High. And I should mention that this change was actually implemented in August in coordination with Terra Nova. They were very supportive of this change. Parents were supportive of this change or said that it would still work for them, the consolidation of those routes. So we're actually really pleased that we were able to do that early because it's helped us do even more as kids have gone back to all the schools in the county. Next slide, please. So looking ahead, and you can go ahead to the next one. We are inviting the public to comment on all these changes through November 8. The best place to get information is reimaginesamtrans.com. We have descriptions of the changes to every route. And there's a comment form right there on the page where people can give their input and let us know how supportive they are of these changes. We are also holding public meetings, doing pop-up events, and we do have a formal public hearing or we will have a formal public hearing at our November 3rd board meeting. Next slide. So these are the dates of our public meetings. I bolded there in the middle our COSEID meeting. It's going to be on Thursday, October 28th at 5:30. Really invite people who want to know more about each individual route. We'll really be going into detail about all of the COSEID changes, proposed changes at this meeting on October 28th. And all of the information, it is a virtual meeting. It's on Zoom. All of the information is available on our project website. And again, our public hearing at our board meeting on November 3rd. Next slide. So just to wrap up, we are quickly going to be looking toward, working toward implementation of this. We are anticipating a phased implementation. We want to strategically align our changes so that we avoid gaps in service and really maintain the reliability of the service that we have. The first phase of implementation will start in August 2022. And as we recruit and train additional bus operators, which we're working very hard to do, we will look to expand our service in future phases, perhaps starting in January 2023. Next slide. So that's everything in my presentation. Very happy to answer any questions or hear any comments.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I see we have a question from councilmember O'Neal.
It's more just a comment is, I'm very happy to see that you've increased the frequency of the routes. I know that's been in weekend service because that's been a big issue for the seniors back of the valley on Oddstead and Terra Nova Boulevard. So thank you for listening to that and taking that into consideration.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. So going with what Mike just said, which route does go back into the back of the valley? Because you were talking, you talked about the Lindamar neighborhood, but it wasn't clear what that meant.
So that would, that will be the 110. I'm not sure if this is as far back as you all would like or typically refer to when you say back of the valley, but it does go onto Terra Nova Boulevard. I'm not sure it makes it all the way to Oddstead, actually.
Okay, thank you. And then where did Route 140 previously go? Because you're deleting that, right?
Yes, so Route 140 previously went over into San Bruno, over to Tamferan, and it actually made its way all the way to the Air Train, SFO Air Train, but very few folks were actually using that connection.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you very much. And I'm not sure if I just blanked while you were giving the presentation. Or was 140 the one that connected to Skyline College or was that a different line?
Yes, it did. It did go to Skyline.
Okay, so if we're deleting 140, what's the connection between Pacifica and Skyline College?
So folks would be able to take the 112 up to Cerro Monte Center and get on another bus there down to Skyline. That would be the new connection.
And as you were reviewing ridership, this was presumably before the pandemic?
Yes, before the pandemic.
And if you happen to know off the top of your head, do you know approximately how long that would take to get to Cerro Monte and then to Skyline? And did you say that you were deleting the 112 leg that was from Lindamar? Is it only? So if I wanted to get from Lindamar to Skyline College, do you know approximately how long that might take me?
Um, let's see. I don't, I don't want to guess, but I'm happy to come back or follow up with you about that. From Lindamar, you would take the 110 probably up to Daly City BART station. We are also recommending a new, while we're working with the college to see if we can make something work out with a new sort of limited stop route from Daly City. But they also offer a free shuttle, a pretty robust free shuttle from Daly City BART to Skyline. And that's like no stops. It's like virtually no stops between Daly City BART and Skyline College. So someone could either take the 110 or the 118, which is also a limited stop, very quick ride, like that ride is only like 20 minutes from Lindamar up to Daly City BART and then connect to either the free Skyline Shuttle, which I think, I don't know how long that takes, but it's no stops at all. So it's as fast as it can be.
Okay, I have fond recollections of taking a summer course to Skyline, walking the two miles from Banyan to the Lindamar station stop and then going from Lindamar to Manor and then Manor taking what was then the 40 up to Skyline. And then of course, in reverse after that particular class, let alone any college students who are more active. So I have a particular interest in making sure that, you know, we're well, at least well-coordinated with that Daly City Shuttle so that students in Pacifica are able to get to Skyline adequately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Butterlass.
My concern again is the seniors, because even though you're adding weekend service, it doesn't go back to where most of the seniors, that we have two large complexes at the bottom of Terra Nova and Oddstead, where a lot of seniors live. And none of the bus routes are going there, and it's great to have them on weekends, but the most of the complaints we heard were from seniors. Also, I'm a representative for the North End and you just took away our bus service altogether. So I don't know. I'm sorry, but it's not making me happy.
Would you mind saying more about where, are you referring to the Pacific Manor?
I'm in the North End, yeah. Pacific Manor, I'm really Fairmont, but I'm in the North End. And so it kind of takes away everything from there, except the stop. We have maybe one stop that you have to get to now to go anywhere on the bus. So when they talk about the ridership is lower, it's going to cause the ridership to be lower because people don't have access to the buses. So then the ridership is going to be lower, then you'll take away more service because there's not the same ridership.
I believe that we're relieving service in that area. I believe that we're relieving service in that area on Route 110. And I know that's going north to Daly City, whereas the 140 would head east towards San Bruno and the air train. But our analysis and of ridership and, and sort of driving trends tells us that most people are heading north toward Daly City or even into San Francisco as opposed to east. So we're just decided to give a shot at really beefing up the service on the north, north-south corridor and see if that, if that does result in some more ridership and, and more utility for folks in that area.
And, and one more question, with no flex service, how many, what was the ridership on the flex service? You said one person?
One person, not every day. So many days, the route does not deviate, does not flex at all. People just use it as a fixed route bus with a normal schedule, and that's how it will be with the 110.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember, Councilmember Vatalas sparked in my mind because I'm trying to understand these routes. Similar to what I was asking you before, but this time the Fairmont Shopping Center. If one were to get from Lindemar Shopping Center to the Fairmount Shopping Center, what routes under the new model would that look like?
I believe the 110. Well, can you say more about Fair, Fairmont, where that is, just so I don't misspeak?
Sure, if my recollection is correct, that would be about the corner of Hickey and Route 35.
A gateway, gateway, yeah, Hickey Gateway and 35.
Oh, Sky, Skyline Drive, also known as Skyline Drive, is that 35? Yeah.
Yes.
So what someone would do is ride the 110 up to Daly City Bart and then get on the 121, which comes down Skyline Drive to, to Skyline College.
So presumably that would be a much longer course. I, that one I asked because of one guy specifically, and I appreciate that it's hard to change a route because of one guy, but that one guy is a gentleman with certain physical limitations who happens to be one of my coworkers. And, you know, if the answer is I have to give him a ride more often, then I suppose that could be the answer. But that one is personally hard, but it is what it is sometimes. Thank you.
Well, actually, oh, go ahead, Councilmember O'Neill.
So it almost seems to me being all, all things, all Sam Trans and Pacifica goes to Daly City Bart. You're almost running a hub and spoke system like airlines do, where everybody goes to a major transfer point and then has to transfer to another module mode of transportation such as Bart or to another bus system. So you're going to a hub and spoke system?
I wouldn't say 100%, but we are in some cases looking for people to transfer either to another Sam Trans bus or to Bart or to Caltrain or to some other service that is, you know, a little bit redundant with one of the routes that we had.
So is, there is a bus that's going to be running up Highway 1, right? From Half Moon Pescadero up to Pacifica?
Yes, Route 17.
Thank you.
I did want to explore back to Councilmember Big Stick's statement, what the opportunities are for individuals that have mobility constraints due to health-related issues?
Sure, I mean, we do, you know, I think it is important to remember that we do offer paratransit services. We do offer Ready Wheels service for folks who do have mobility challenges with using a fixed route bus. And so that's certainly an option for some, for some folks who could benefit from that. And because we do offer that, we believe that we can make some certain changes to our routes to require people to perhaps make a transfer that will allow us to run more frequent service on, you know, a limited number of routes as opposed to a true coverage-based system that gets just into every nook and cranny that we can. So yes, I do want to mention our, make sure our paratransit service that folks know about that.
And then I want to echo Mayor Protem's concerns and questions about the Route 110 and its proximity to Terra Nova High School. And then if you could double check that route for us to make sure that it is connecting from Terra Nova all the way down to the bottom to Onstad Boulevard, because you said you weren't sure it went that far. And that is, that goes back to Councilmember Vatalas's statements about the senior locations where there's a couple of large senior housing areas. It seems like Onstad is a pretty major artery leading, you know, in the back of the valley. So I'd be surprised if it didn't go that far. But if it didn't, it seems like we need to really take a hard look at that.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I did just pull up a map, which is a better thing to do than take a guess. So what I have just found when I looked at a map is that it does, the 110 would serve a, a very small segment of Onstad between Terra Nova Boulevard. Well, let's see, between Terra Nova Boulevard and then a small segment of Onstad, and then it hops back on Terra Nova Boulevard. So it looks like that's, there are stops right in front of Pacific Oak, Oak Senior Center, senior apartments, which may not be the only one that, that you all are thinking of in terms of senior housing. But that, that is the sort of a small segment of Onstad that we do connect to. But I see that it goes even further back than, than the segment that we do go to.
And then it gets back to Lindemar Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, that makes sense to me. Does that answer the question you had? Yeah, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks for giving me a second shot at that one, looking at a map.
Thank you, and thanks for looking up.
Yes.
I think the service to Fairmont's pretty important. And I, I've been, you know, I pulled up some maps too, but I think all in all, we kind of have a lot of questions. And so it might be helpful for us to like see the full routes and, and make sure, you know? I think that's, I, I need time like to look the maps and to get some of those questions answered because we can't just leave out Fairmont.
Well, I would just definitely welcome you to go on to reimagine samtrans.com. We have a little, we have a section about every route in the system. And if you want to have more of a conversation, I'd be happy to have more of a conversation with anyone in the next month or so while we're kind of seeking all of our input.
Yeah, I would love that. I would love like a two-on-one meeting or something. I don't know, maybe one of other of my council members would be interested in, in meeting with you too. So that would be very helpful.
Sure.
Great. Oh, Councilmember Vatalas, go ahead, please.
Our issues here in Pacifica are that we don't have other transportation. If you run a whole lot of buses on El Camino, yeah, you're going to get more ridership. But those people have options. Those people can take the train, they can take Bart, they can, I mean, I'm sorry, at certain points, they can take Bart. But we don't have any transportation options here. We're, we're basically just off by ourselves and everybody has to drive. And then we have problems with traffic because everyone does drive because they don't have the opportunities to take any other transportation. And I always feel like we're just like the stepchild and we just get pushed aside all the time. And we don't have any additional transportation. And I thank you for going back to Onstad and Terra Nova because I think that's really important and doing the weekend. So I will say some positive things too. But, and it's not your fault that we don't have any transportation here. We just don't, so thank you.
Councilmember Big Stick.
I really wanted to echo what Councilmember Vatalas had to say again. And we have a lot of concerns and a lot of them born from our experience. I was an avid bus rider for like the first 27 years of my life. And again, it's been this same two-mile walk from here to Lindemar to get everywhere. All that being said, and we have a lot of very strong concerns in our community. I do want to thank you for being here and listening to our strong concerns and not just bombard you as though it's all your fault. So thank you for being here and listening to us.
And, and Sue, it looks like the, the 112 goes around to Hickey and Fairmont Shopping Center. But let's make sure about that. Thank you for your presentation. We really do appreciate you.
And we will do our best to help promote that October 28 meeting as well within our community since it is the focusing on the coast side. That will be, I think, a good place for us to help our residents direct their comments as well and their interest. So thank you for that. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, council members. We're moving to our consent calendar. There are eight items on the consent calendar. And I would like to ask council members to please raise their hand to indicate if they have an interest in pulling any items. I think I have a hand first from Councilmember Big Stick, then Mayor Protem, then Councilmember Vatalas. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I have interest in pulling item number eight, first of all. I also had a very minor correction to the minutes, and I just need clarification whether or not I need to actually pull the minutes in order to make that clarification or if I can do it with everything else.
You do not need to pull the minutes and we should first vote on any items that you want to pull and then you can have discussion on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Vote on items that council members want to remove from consent.
So do you want to hear from all the council members who have their hands up first and do one motion? Or do each one separately, city attorney?
That's up to the, you know, discretion of the presiding officer, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, then I'll hear from Mayor Protem.
I was interested in item eight, too.
Okay, and Councilmember Vatalas, yes? All right, very well. So we'll need a motion in a second on pulling that?
I move to pull item number eight from consent.
So Madam Mayor, you should now discuss where you want to place that on the agenda.
Do we need a second for that?
Second.
Okay, discussion, shall we, where shall we place that item on the agenda? Wouldn't it ordinarily be after the consent agenda?
Yeah, immediately after the consent agenda.
That was my understanding, yeah. Is that acceptable, Councilmember Big Stick?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, great. Then we'll put it right up the consent agenda. I, for all communications. All right then. Let's see if there's any public, members of the public that want to discuss items on the consent calendar. I see.
Which, which are now items one through seven only.
Correct, so if you have comments on item eight, then it would be discussed separately. So please hold those comments. Mr. Montemeyer will take public comment. And would you please state the item that you are interested or making a comment about?
As Madam Mayor, we had one hand raised by Julie. Okay, Julie, you may now unmute yourself. Julie, are you there?
I wanted to talk about number eight. Where, that is my hand too soon.
Okay, very well, thank you. Come back to you then. You can raise your hand again when we get to that item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we'll close public comment on the consent counter. If there are no other hands, Mr. Montemeyer?
There are no more hands raised at this time, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and then we'll have a motion on the rest of the items, items one through seven. But Councilmember Big Stick, you have your hand up. Did you want to make a comment first?
Yes, regarding the minutes.
Oh, right.
From September 27th, unpack at page 19. I just wanted to amend, it's, it's in my comments under council communications. It's the line that begins, he attended the San Mateo County Library JPA meeting where they passed their budget. He was interested to hear about all the summer learning opportunities this summer. And it drove home to him that, and what I, I'd like it to read is, "A modern library is a very active entity that facilitates education for our youth and communal activities." And then in the following sentence, if instead of with electronic communication, it could read, "Given the modern frequency of electronic communication."
So, Madam Mayor, that if the rest of the council agrees that that is what was actually said, then, then the council can go ahead and move that item with those clarifications.
I see no indication, any hands, that there's any debate about what Councilmember Big Stick said? That, my recollection is that's the spirit of what he said. Yes?
I move that we accept items one through seven with the changes made by Councilmember Big Stick.
Now, second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vatalas, moved by Councilmember Big Stick. I'll do a roll call. Councilmember Big Stick?
Yes.
Councilmember Vatalas?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer?
Yep.
And Mayor Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right then. We'll now take up item eight, which is now its own item. The item is a resolution supporting the Manor Drive Overcrossing Project and authorizing a submittal of an applicant, application for Measure A and Measure W Highway Program Funds and authorizing the city manager to execute any documents required for the grant application and committing the required matching funds for the project if the grant is approved. We have staff report from Mr. Batista and Director Peterson, and I see the city manager is here as well.
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. And one thing that would help, I mean, when we, when we pull an item, staff's prepared for, then be prepared to generally summarize the item. But if there's specific questions that council, you know, members have, we'd like to specifically respond to those. And Deputy Director Batista can do that.
Okay, Councilmember Big Stick. Did you, city manager, did you want to have Councilmember Big Stick and Mayor Protem, who's second in the motion, raise those questions first before Councilman, before Mr. Batista goes ahead? Was that your intent?
Sure, yeah, I think, I think that would help because we, you know, we don't have a whole presentation planned on the item and can summarize things, but we want to make sure to focus on what the questions are for the reasons it being pulled.
Understood. All right, Councilmember Big Stick, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I believe Councilmember, Member Vatalas might want to weigh in also, if I recall properly. But
Thank you.
From my perspective, the way I was looking at things, we were so inundated by community concern on that particular agenda item. I wanted to give the community an opportunity to vocalize their concern and to try and address their concerns therefrom. And so I'm interested in hearing an initial staff report that may or may not address any of those concerns that may or may not have been heard prior. But after a staff report so that we can gain a better understanding, then I'd like to hear those concerns and try to address some of them at least. Thank you.
Very well, and Councilmember Vatalas? Did you have anything additional?
No, I just wanted an explanation so that the public understands exactly what we're doing. Just a simple explanation would be fine.
Okay, and also Mayor Protem, was that your concern as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yes, it was.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Batista, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. And Batista, your deputy director. Sam Batista, Deputy Director of Public Works, and the item before you is a resolution supporting the Manor Drive overcrossing project and authorizing submittal of an application for Measure A and Measure W grant funding in the amount of two point seven million dollars. Just a, you know, a brief description of the project. The Highway One Manor Drive Overcross Improvement Project would widen the highway crossing, overcrossing at Manor Drive between Palmetto and Oceana Boulevard to better accommodate buses and trucks. The project will consist, will construct new ADA compliant ramps, install new traffic signals, and construct better defined crosswalks for the increased protection of pedestrians and bicyclists. The preliminary planning study also evaluated the construction of a new freeway on-ramp for northbound Highway One at Malaga Drive and Oceana Boulevard, utilizing the existing bus pullout on, on-ramp that is no longer in use. This will allow local traffic to access northbound Highway One without traveling through the Manor Drive-Oceana Boulevard intersection, and therefore reduce congestion at the Manor Drive Overcrossing at along Oceana Boulevard. Since the overcrossing traverses over Highway One, the project is subject to Caltrans project development processes. These processes include six distinct phases. Phase one is a preliminary planning study, which usually takes approximately one year long. Phase two is the project study report, project initiation document, which is about a one and a half year effort. Phase three is the project environmental and approval document, which takes approximately two years. Phase four is the design phase, and that takes another two years. Phase five is the right away acquisition, which can concurrently run with phase four phase four in design. And then phase six is construction, and we expect the construction to take at least two years long. So, the city has currently completed phase one, the preliminary planning study, and the, and staff is looking for grant funds to advance this ongoing city council priority project to its next phases. The preliminary planning study is analogous to a feasibility study, which analyzes the existing conditions and determines if improvements can be built. During the course of the preliminary planning study, two community meetings were held. Residents and businesses were notified through Connect with Pacifica, Facebook, and Nextdoor. In addition, over two thousand flyers were mailed to residents and businesses in the Manor Drive area and Sharp Park areas. The first meeting was held on November twenty seventh, twenty eighteen, to introduce the project and get any initial public comments. AECOM, the city's traffic engineering consultant, developed the design incorporating comments heard at the first meeting and presented the updated design at the second meeting, which was held on May eighth, twenty nineteen. At the second meeting, residents voiced their concerns regarding the design of the overcrossing and Malaga Drive on-ramp. A straw poll was taken regarding the on-ramp at Malaga Drive, and seventy-five percent of the attendees voted to drop the on-ramp, while twenty-five percent were in favor of keeping the Malaga Drive on-ramp effort in the study. Staff told residents that as part of the grant for the preliminary planning study, it was required to evaluate the Malaga on-ramp option. And should the city receive grant funding for the next phases for the project study report, project initiation document, and/or the environmental document phase, a public engagement plan will be developed similar to the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project. And we would encourage the public to participate in the project's development. So, during the, the project study report and the project initiation document, Caltrans will require more evaluation of the entire project, which includes analyzing the Malaga on-ramp. Currently, staff is working with the Transportation Authority to see if revisions could be made to the scope of the project to remove the on-ramp component and still be eligible for the grant. And we're just currently waiting to hear a response. So, that concludes my short staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any of these questions.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you very much. And I see Councilmember Big Stick has his hand raised. Did you have a question before we do public comment?
Yes, please.
Please, go ahead.
Hi there, Sam, good to see you. If you'd be so kind, what I think I just heard you say is that the grant funding we're asking for tonight is for evaluation and analysis of the Malaga on-ramp, along with the rest of the project, which implies to me that we're still in the evaluation and analysis phase of that piece of the project. And that's a part of what it would fund is analysis and figuring out if it's something we really want to do at the end of the day.
Right, so as I said earlier, phase one has been completed, so that was one of the feasibility studies. So, as we go into phase two, that will will go into depth and with the project. And it's also, it's a more concerted effort with review with Caltrans. So, you know, Caltrans will be looking at the design, will also be going out, you know, to the public and getting input. So, that, that's phase two. So, the application also, we're also trying to get grant money for phase three, which is environmental document. And of course, that, you know, that itself will have a lot of public engagement. So.
Phase three would be things like air quality reports, things like that.
That's correct, so, you know, sea level rise, all that will be brought up.
Thank you very much.
All right, I think we should go to public comment on this item. Mr. Montemayor?
Yes, I am seeing few hands raised. Madam Mayor, give me one moment to pull up a timer.
And there was one person who had sought to raise their hand earlier. I believe the name was Julie. I want to make sure that person has the opportunity to speak as well at this time.
All right, hopefully Julie will raise her hand, but we'll start off with Deegol, followed by Victoria Becker. Deegol, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Deegol. I live in Pacific Manor. I was part of those community meetings. I think it's kind of appalling to hear the Planning Department or the Public Works Department talk about how there's going to be engagement of the public when our engagement was ignored. We went to two public meetings, we said a lot of things, we wrote comments, and we, and it was completely ignored in moving on to this next phase. So, I feel no relief in the idea that there'll be public comment in later phases. As projects move forward and we get to phase two and phase three, the ability to change the basic design of the project become less and less and less. Here's the problem. One, putting an on-ramp on Malaga is going to increase traffic of children, where people are children and pets, and everybody else is moving on neighborhood streets. We don't need it. There's, there's on-ramps within a half a mile on either side. So, so it's dangerous. Furthermore, the design of, I agree that we should fix the Manor overcrossing. I ride a bicycle there. It's dangerous, it's not well lit. That stuff can be done without, without this humongous project. And creating diagonal parking and a bus stop on Manor is not going to reduce congestion on that Manor overcrossing. It's only going to increase it. So, I think that you need to pull this old design project, which has so many substantial flaws. Reimagine what it is that we need to make that Manor overcrossing safer and more efficient. And then you need to notify the public, because all of us who went to those public meetings signed up our names on lists to be notified as this thing moved forward. And the only way I happen to know about this is that a friend who pays attention to the City Council agenda said, "Hey, this is on the City Council agenda again," without us even knowing. So, if you're going to engage the public, you should at least respect us enough to notify us as the project moves forward. And thank you very much for your attention. I really thank the council members for pulling this off the consent calendar. I think our next step needs to be another community meeting where people can be heard, and a proposal can then be brought back to the City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gold. Our next speaker is Victoria Becker, followed by Suzanne Moore. Victoria, you may now unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Hi, my name is Victoria Becker. I'm, I'm absolutely, totally flabbergasted that the report mentioned they took a straw poll. Seventy-five percent of the people in the room said, "Don't make the Malaga on-ramp." And then the project just continued on. I don't understand what the point of community input is if nobody listens to it. The community at those meetings talked about very perfectly good suggestions on how to improve things. They talked about a roundabout at the Paloma-Oceana on-ramp, and absolutely nothing has been paid attention to. There seems to be no purpose whatsoever in putting in a third on-ramp in a short space of, of area in northern part of Pacifica. I just absolutely don't understand, and I feel like democracy is dead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Our next speaker is Suzanne Moore, followed by Julie. Suzanne?
Thanks, Josh. Consent item number eight should be modified. The Malaga on-ramp should be dropped. To my knowledge, the public's had no opportunity for input on the Manor Drive overcrossing project since that May eighteenth, two thousand nine meeting, and there were a lot of questions that were left over for the community at that time. However, the neighborhood was absolutely clear that the Malaga northbound highway ramp was opposed. They gave several reasons for their opposition, and they even offered a possible alternative. I think neighbors agree that the Manor Street Bridge across Highway One is in need of repair. And so, I suggest that the city apply for A and W grant funds only for the Manor Bridge repair and exclude the northbound Highway One on-ramp. Monies for the ridge repair are desperately needed while the on-ramp construction is opposed by neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Our next speaker is Julie, followed by Christine Bowles. Julie, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm also hoping that council will vote no on this resolution until more ideas can be investigated. These are two very, first of all, they're very separate projects that have been lumped together unnecessarily. For one, the Manor overpass, I live just a couple of blocks from there, and I go through that interchange section at least ten times a day. And traffic moves very well there, so I don't think that the overpass needs such a drastic change. And I certainly don't think that traffic lights and a tight double intersection would help in the least. I also went to those public meetings, and I also feel like none of our suggestions made it into this resolution in any way, and that's very discouraging. And about the freeway on-ramp, again, that would cause a huge amount of traffic in an area not equipped to handle it. Malaga is not a through street. People would zip down it. Cars would come onto Malaga from all the narrow streets that feed into it. This is not a pretty picture. If another on-ramp is needed in the neighborhood, why not use the already existing on-ramp at Oceana just north of Paloma? There's a very similar configuration on Lundie Way near Sharp Park, where a car can enter northbound one oh one from both directions. A right turn from Oceana down there by Paloma could be easily added with less expense than a whole new on-ramp at Malaga. The existing bus pullout is useless. It's much too short, and it's not up to code. You'd have to start from scratch. Whereas down there just north of Paloma, you already have a decent on-ramp. So, please, I know Pacifica wants the available funding. They always do. But if the plan is bad, what good is funding? We should be able to come up with better, less disruptive solutions to our traffic problems. I'm hoping you'll vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And our next speaker is Christine Bowles, followed by Bailey Clough here. Christine, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you. This is Christine Bowles, and I live here in the Manor area and cross that horrible overpass regularly and try to find ways around it. The traffic is so bad and, and blocks, you know, streets and all four directions around there. I didn't live here in two thousand eighteen when these meetings took place, and I was just trying to find some information online. I was disappointed that the, the staff report tonight didn't have any information or, or plans included for us to, to review, you know, what, where, where we were now in the proposed design. So, I wanted to confirm that what I found that stated November twenty seventh, two thousand eighteen is current, and if not, perhaps Public Works staff can email me what the current schematic drawings are so that I can study them. There are no dimensions on these plans, and, you know, right now, the overcrossing basically aligns with the streets. And so, I'm not sure what the displacement of the sidewalks and the pedestrian safety issues might might be, you know, with, with a much wider overpass that seems to be proposed. I also, I, I guess I'm trying to understand. I didn't add up all the dates that Mr. Batista said, but it sounded like this was, you know, a ten to fifteen year process. And as we know, the, the bridge has steel exposed that is falling. The last, we discussed this at a meeting several months ago, Caltrans was supposed to come out and do a structural evaluation, and I haven't heard a report on that. So, I would like to have some information on that and what, what actually are the structural issues? And are, is the bridge really going to survive and through this whole process until, you know, the, the time it can be replaced? And then, and then maybe there are some other creative options, because this is obviously going to be very disruptive if you're trying to replace a major intersection, you know, over, over at least a two-year construction period for the neighborhood, that perhaps, you know, a separate bridge could be added for bikes and pedestrians, that we could widen the overpass for cars and not have to close that completely. So, anyway, I, I agree with the public that I think there needs to be more community engagement before we decide on an option and, and start to get funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. And I have one more hand raised from Bailey Clough here. You may now unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I am a homeowner in the two hundred block of Malaga Drive since two thousand eleven, so I live just a bit over a block away from the project that we're discussing tonight. I'm very concerned about the unnecessary addition of this on-ramp for safety reasons, quality of life reasons, and also economic reasons. But before I get into the specifics of my concerns, I'd just like to remind council and project managers that there is already a northbound on-ramp, six tenths of a mile to the south of the intended new on-ramp, and another northbound on-ramp, four tenths of a mile to the north of the intended Malaga Drive on-ramp. So, there will, there will be three on-ramps within one mile of each other. Obviously, there will be a tremendous increase in traffic on the Lager Drive and adjacent streets, which is going to have a detrimental impact on me and on my residential neighborhood. Pedestrians and bikers, including children heading to Oceana High School and Ocean Shores Elementary School, as well as people walking their dogs, parents pushing their babies in strollers, everybody will be at more risk. There's a lot of foot traffic in that neighborhood. We know the amount of vehicles on the road will increase, as well as the pace with which the vehicles are driven. People heading for an on-ramp are often accelerating, looking ahead, not as focused on crosswalks as they should be. People heading for an on-ramp are often accelerating, looking ahead, not as focused on crosswalks as they should be. Also want to mention the fire station is located in that 100 block of Malaga and will be impacted by this when they have emergency calls. Another concern I have is that this project could lead to an increase in crime, which has been mentioned by other speakers today. There's going to be easy, quick access to commit robberies and get on the freeway. And when I purchased my home, this was actually a thought that I had. It was a concern that I had about living so close to the freeway. But because it was just an exit ramp, I felt safer. So this is actually something that would increase safety concerns. The Chevron Station in particular will be at risk. And lastly, and I know there are many Realtors here that are listening tonight that are also on council, my home is my main investment and asset. And you're putting an on-ramp 500 feet from my home absolutely lowers my property value and my neighbor's property values over the long term, if not immediately. I know property value is something that you understand. It's front of mind for several of you at all times. And I have one last question for you. If you live near this project, would you actually vote for it, knowing it would negatively impact crime levels, traffic, and your property value? Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Beckmeyer, I do not see any more hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you very much. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Big Stick. And then councilmember Vatterlos. You're muted, Mr. Big Stick.
Thank you very much. Hate it when you press the button and it doesn't do the thing you thought it just did. So one thing I heard was that the folks, or at least one of the folks who had signed up on the mailing list to be kept apprised of the project, wasn't notified about the agenda meeting. So whomever is responsible for making sure that everyone's kept in the loop. If perhaps that could be addressed, it would be appreciated. So it's not lost on me that apparently 75% of those in attendance at these meetings really don't like the idea of this Malaga on-ramp. That being said, as near as I can tell, and staff, this is a question for you. What I hear you saying is that the grant funding we're applying for is three and a half years of studying whether or not this could be a good idea. Three and a half years before we ever go anywhere near a design phase. And what basically a lot of that grant funding would be is just studying whether or not this is a good idea. That's what I kept hearing from you. So if I could have confirmation on that, I'm not an engineer. I don't know what may or may not help traffic. I don't like that 75% of the neighborhood at least apparently doesn't like this idea. But I want to know what the idea is before summarily shooting it down. That's kind of where I'm coming from. So if you could, again, just walk me through the nuance of the process when we actually come to design? And how about, how much opportunity realistically we might have between now and then as to whether or not we can reconsider this in light of community concern and the cost-benefit analysis in terms of what would actually do to traffic? That's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Big Stick. To answer your question, yes. You know, Phase Two, which happens to be the project study report, will take about a year and a half. And Caltrans will require us to, you know, have a robust review of all the options for this project. So, you know, we would be looking at all the different options, you know, to make sure that this project does work. Then, you know, then two years after the, what we call the PID, with the project initiation document, so two years after the PID is completed, environmental will take another two years. So, and, you know, and let me just back up. The cost for the PID is about $500,000. The cost of the environmental document is approximately $2.5 million. So once you get the environmental document approved by Caltrans, then we can go into the design phase. And the design phase will cost probably around $3 to $4 million. So that will take, you know, two years. Then, once everything is approved, then we could finally go into construction. So it is a pretty lengthy process. And was there another question that you want me to answer?
Well, maybe to zero in just a little bit. I think what I'm hearing you say is especially this chunk of Phase Two over the next year and a half, we'd been given, we would be given a thorough rendition of what the various options are. And that would be the opportunity to really figure out whether or not we want to go with a different option.
Right. Well, we will be providing options to the public and to council.
Councilmember Vatterlos was next, and then Mayor Protambeer.
There were no plans or any drawings or anything included in the staff report because we're not approving the plan. We're not approving the project. All we're looking for is to get grant money so we can study what we're doing. That's why there were no plans or project included. I went to those meetings also, so I understand what the public is saying. But that's not what we're approving tonight. We're approving grant funding to study further the project. Thank you.
Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protambeer.
Yeah. So did this project always include the on-ramp? Or is it, because it seems, and I wasn't on council, right, at the beginning? Or was I? No, I wasn't. It seems like two separate things to me. So is it possible to still apply for grant funding for just the overcrossing?
And that is something that we are trying to work with the TA, you know, to see if we can, see if we can get funding for just the overcrossing. Once we find out, you know, we can come back to council and notify everyone. But there is a grant deadline. So that's why we need to have this resolution adopted.
Yeah, okay. Well, it seems pretty clear to me that that would be the way to go, is to try to get funding just for the overpassing and then go from there.
Okay. Councilmember O'Neill.
Right. Asking Sam, so the, if I heard you correctly, you said that it was included in the plan and we were asking permission to go for, to, for separate funding just for the overcrossing and not that? And that has, we have to get permission for that. Am I correct?
So we are trying to see if we can uncouple, we will, you know, we'll, we've contacted the TA. We're waiting to hear back from them to see if we can uncouple the on-ramp from the overcrossing.
So us voting no on this tonight would also be canceling any funding for the repair of the overcrossing? Am I, is that a correct assumption? Okay, so by us voting no tonight, we would be saying no to repairing the Manor overcrossing. And at some point, if they say permission is granted, we may have the option of doing the other thing, right? And I would like to urge my councilmembers to think of some of the issues. The South End is now facing, you know, at least, what, 300 or 400 new residences? People are, developers are swarming over to build. Okay. I think we need to look at this from a long-term perspective in that virtually every house that is in that neighborhood right now could become a fourplex, given state law, with no public hearings, administrative approval, and the city cannot stop that. Am I correct in that assumption? An understanding that basically every lot over, what is it, 2,500 feet can be subdivided, can be subdivided and two more houses being built there, or possibly three units? So that would, that would make the population in that area go much higher. You would also have, we also did have the potential of a developer wanting to build 200 hotel rooms on that big swatch of land below Conimera before Chapel, before the Pavilion of Flowers. So I think we have to look at this as something that maybe you don't want it today, but later on, if you have a lot of single-family homes become duplexes, triplexes, and possibly apartment units built, and the city cannot say no to, you're going to want that on-ramp. Okay, personally, I have cut through those streets. When I look and see that the block, that it's two or three-block weight to get onto the Monterey on-ramp, I've cut through those streets to go up and go down Monterey and get right on. So I think an on-ramp right there would actually decrease some of the traffic there as all that traffic north of Manor would go there. So that's my thoughts on it.
Okay, thank you. I have one question, but I also see Director Peterson is on. So Director Peterson, did you have some comments or some information to share with us?
Yes, yes, I did. Thank you very much, Mayor. I just kind of wanted to add on what Councilmember O'Neill said, you know, regarding additional development that can come into the area. And one of the things I just want to make sure everybody understands is Caltrans looks at this as a planning document as well. So they're looking at this. They don't want to provide money for something that's going to be obsolete in five years or 10 years. You know, they're going to provide $10 million, $20 million. They want you to look at all the options. It doesn't mean they're going to force you to build it, but they want to have the information. So this stage of the project, it's important to be able to provide Caltrans with all the information. If we only look at one section, and it's questionable they even let us do that, it could be that after we do that, Caltrans comes back and says, hey, well, you didn't look at everything that's available, and we just don't really feel that you've looked at this enough from a planning perspective. And so we just don't want to throw money at something that maybe ultimately could have been built better, which makes sense, right? I mean, they want to make sure that their money's being well-spent. So I just want to throw that in there, that ultimately Caltrans does like to look at all the options, just as we've seen that also to be true, you know, for Coastal Commission with our Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project. They want to see the options. So they want to make sure we're making the right choice and we're spending the money appropriately. So I just wanted to throw that in.
Thank you very much.
Unless there's other comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent item number eight, as stated.
I don't think I see any hands for other comments. Is there a second?
Second.
Consent calendar number eight. I have a motion by Councilmember O'Neill, seconded by Councilmember Vatterlos. And I'll do the roll call vote. Councilmember Big Stick?
I'm sorry, I was confused. I didn't second specifically because I didn't hear the mayor speak yet, and I thought she was going to for a moment. So I just, before I vote, I want to make sure there's no further comment.
Oh, sure. I didn't speak because I, the question I had was really answered by, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that, by Director Peterson, in terms of the overall planning nature of this. The central question, though, that I have, and I feel it will come up in a planning process, is the relationship between some proposed on-ramp in this vicinity and the two on-ramps that are already existing roughly half a mile on either end of where this on-ramp is being discussed. That really does seem to me to be the rub. It seems to me everyone agrees about the Manor Drive overcrossing impact and need for that. I'm not really sure what the history and the origin of the coupling of the two things is, but I can imagine that it's, you know, on some level, the idea that, yeah, we know you need the Manor Drive overcrossing, and we want you to look at this thing, too. And so from a planning perspective, going back to Director Peterson's comments, that was my question, and she addressed it. So I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that. I should have said, I don't have a question anymore.
Just wanted to make sure it was all said. If my vote is still being called. And I just wanted to say that I absolutely do not intend on being cavalier with the wishes of the neighborhood. It has taken well how many people came out to speak against that piece of it. If I thought for a moment there will not be robust opportunity down the road, I would not cast my vote as I am about to cast it. But I want to see that studying come out to see exactly what this project means, entails, what it could result as. And then if we want to kill it, in a year and a half, presumably, I'll still be here and I can cast my vote then. So that being said, for me, yes.
Councilmember Vatterlos?
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Big Stick. Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Protambeer?
I look forward to hearing whether it can be uncoupled or not. So that'll be good information for us to get later. Having said that, I vote yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer?
And I similarly vote yes, and would, with the caveat and the request, the strong request that we have a robust public engagement process, including feedback loops. I vote yes.
Motion passes by the chair.
All right, council, thank you very much for that. And public, thank you. We are presently at eight, almost 8:30, and we have our oral communications, council communications, staff communications sections yet to go, as well as our reorganized item number 13 coming up first on our consent agenda. I mean, our consideration, items for consideration. So I'm asking you, council, what your wish is, whether we should take a break at this point or proceed through our oral communications and council communications and staff communications first. Feedback, please. Councilmember O'Neill, you have your hand up. I'll pick on you.
Oh, I forgot to take it off. But I, you know, I'm up, leave it up to the chair. You know, I'm okay, either way.
All right, I'd like to take a five-minute break. Thank you. And let us turn to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issues that, on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided, however, that during oral communications... provided however that during oral communications, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Title Two, Chapter One, Section Two-Dash-One Dot One-One-Eight. Any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall be called to order by the presiding officer, and if such conduct continues, may, at the discretion of the presiding officer, be ordered barred from further audience before the council during the meeting. Mr. Montemeyer?
Yes, Mayor Beckmeyer, right now I'm not seeing any hands raised.
All right then, we'll close oral communications and bring it to council for council communications. Who would like to start? Councilmember Big Stick?
I will start, but it makes me nervous that there were no oral communications. Um, so I had a relatively restful couple of weeks, so my comments will be uncharacteristically brief. If I can find my notes. So I um went to Soul Grind this afternoon, had a lovely meal. Um, really good soup, along with their pastries, and of course, they're always good beverages. And I had the opportunity to visit the toy store over in uh Eureka Square. Um, and it was really cool to see that we have a new toy store, and I talked to the owner, he's able to order things. So um as we move into the holiday season, um, if you haven't checked out the new toy store over in Eureka Square, please do so. There's also one in Lindemar that I haven't checked out yet, and um, given that I work there every day, I should do that already, and I will report out as soon as I do. Um, on the twenty-eighth, uh, the Tuesday after our last council meeting, I sat in audience at the um Planning Commission, uh Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, and Beautification Advisory Commission Joint Study Session um on updating our tree ordinance. It was fascinating. It was also fascinating to uh watch a meeting that was a joint between three committees run so well. Um, it was really good to see um the smoothness with which we operate. Um, I had took a lot of constituent meetings over the last couple of weeks. I did uh momentarily misplace my phone, so if anybody um was trying to contact me regarding city issues, and you have not heard back from me yet, I have recently reclaimed my phone, and so I'll be calling soon. Um, and after that, uh COVID's still a thing, please make sure you're wearing those masks indoors. Um, getting vaccinated is not just about you. Um, getting vaccinated is about protecting all those around you also. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Vatalas?
Um, I actually have less to say. Um, I had a meeting with Mayor Protem Beer with the Golden Gate National Recreation Area, and it was an extremely productive meeting. Um, they were willing to listen to us about all of our concerns about parking, bathrooms, trash. Um, every single thing we brought up, they had maybe five members there, and it was quite impressive, and they listened to us. Um, the reason I didn't attend any other meetings, because I attended fifteen other meetings for my other job. So um it was long Zoom convention, so um that was all I attended. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Okay, I know, um, I, I, I'm certainly very happy to hear that Mary and Sue Vatalas had a very good meeting with their, the federal government and their counterparts. However, I went to the other side of the coin, and I went to the airport roundtable. And the FAA was their usual pleasant self that, you know, wants to spread silencers all around the North Peninsula. But, you know, I was dreaming. So anyhow, I went to the airport roundtable, and I did meet with a couple of people regarding the tree ordinance, um, because I had to work that night, so I could not even watch it. And um, and I followed up with some of the people I met with at the um League of Cities Conference. Now, we'll be talking to the city manager about um a couple of things I would like to pursue. Um, one of them, actually tomorrow night, the Economic Development Commission, E- Economic Development Committee is having their meeting, and I'm gonna be presenting one of the slideshows from one of the um, um, presenters, and it's all on the trends that they have seen. Um, the trends they have seen since the pandemic. And it's really interesting how some industries have totally changed, and I think a lot of s- what they're talking about in these trends could have an effect on our Sharp Park specific plan, our general plan, and the interaction with what businesses do, and maybe some direction that the Economic Development Committee might wanna take in regards to future planning. So anyhow, that's tomorrow night, so I get to report on that the next week. But other than that, that was it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, yeah, I would really like to talk about our meeting with the uh Golden Gate National Recreation area and the National Park Service. Um, and so, my dear people in Fairway Park, please know that everything that you have been asking for and talking about was heard. And so the letter that our city manager sent in was point by point by point. We went down and we addressed every single thing. And not only was the um, the National Park Service there and the GGNRA, but our staff and leadership, and this is only the very preliminary meeting. And so there's gonna be a group formed, and we're gonna be meeting again. And I am just really hopeful, and it was such a positive, productive meeting. Um, and I wanna thank um Tina Wermeister for her, um, for just, you were awesome at that meeting. So thank you for just being awesome. But I'm, I'm really happy that things are gonna start to be addressed. And but it's not easy to get these people all in the same room at the same time, you know, and now we're talking about Caltrans and the Coastal Commission. So there's a lot of work to do moving forward, but it's good work and it's solid. So thank you so much. Um, I also attended the study session for um the tree ordinance, and wow, that what a, what a beautiful display of our committees and commissions out there, talking with each other and making decisions and giving their input, because that's what we need, we need their input. And so we're getting it. And so that was a great meeting. Um, I atti- I attended the United Against Hate meeting. We're going to be collaborating with our libraries. And then I'm hoping that we'll be also be able to collaborate with our schools on some campaigns, United Against Hate campaigns. Um, I wanna thank Grocery Outlet for a, a large donation that they gave to the Pacifica Resource Center. I was able to go over and take a picture with people in person, and it was really great. It was like a twelve-thousand-dollar donation. It's beautiful. So thank you so much to Grocery Outlet. Um, and I think that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much. I have a few items. Um, I too attended the tree ordinance meeting, and I agree, it was a great uh opportunity to hear from and see in action a number of our committee and commission members. And I'm always super proud when I see the work that they're doing. And I recall the times that we together appointed folks to those committees and commissions. And, and you have hopes that, you know, you can see based on their application and what they say in their interviews that, that they'll plug in in certain ways, and um it's really gratifying and, and exciting to see that happen. Because there's a lot of work to do in the city, and we are known as a city of volunteers, so it's very um positive. Um, the night after that, that was September twenty-eighth, on the twenty-ninth, I attended a webinar that is, was sponsored by the joint, by Joint Venture Silicon Valley, and with presenters from CalRecycle that had to do with Assembly Bill Thirteen-Eighty-Three. We'll be talking about some of that later in this meeting, so I won't go into detail there. But I just wanna say there's, um, there is a recording of that meeting available, if anyone is interested and couldn't attend. Uh, if you wanna see that. And I met with Gail Benton Schumaker from Tree City Pacifica. We focus primarily on our upcoming um November thirteenth Arbor Day celebration in Pacifica. Some people remember Arbor Day as being in the spring, because that's when it's on all of our, you know, national calendars. But in Pacifica, we celebrate in the fall, because we wanna take advantage of what we are hoping will be our rains coming um in terms of planting trees. The, the plans are shaping up beautifully for that event. I'm very, very excited about the participation and, and partnership with the um garden club, Pacifica Garden Club, and a grant that they were able to get to devote to the project, the partnership with the city, and the focus um on the north end of town with our tree planting this year, which is exciting. And an additional um really special planting of the COVID Memorial Grove, um, which will, it's all great news, more and more information will be coming out. One thing I wanted to mention is, a piece of it is um planting a tree at each of the schools. I think a couple of extra trees at Sunset Ridge School. Um, and that will occur on the, the day before, on the, the twelfth of November. So more to come on that. It's a little bit in the future, but please, please make a note and get those on your calendar. Um, there is a deadline, however, this Friday, coming up for a tree art contest that is being promoted by um, by the group and by Tree City Pacifica. The connection is through the schools. Um, so if you have questions about that, you can contact the district office or a local elementary school or Tree City Pacifica. Um, and that is October fifteenth is the deadline for that. Uh, after that meeting, I attended the Historical Society High Tea Fundraising Event, which was fantastic. And I'm looking forward to more of those. Um, Beautification Advisory Committee meeting on the sixth was an important discussion about the Crespey Drive Bio-Swales, which have come up over time and lots of questions. And I just wanna update council members about a very superb presentation by Julie Gosic, one of our appointees to the Beautification Advisory Committee, who did a fantastic planting plan, utilizing her expertise as a landscape architect. And um with the cooperation and partnership of the City Department of Public Works, we're gonna be able to get the, those planted with some native plants that are particularly adapted for Bio-Swales. We're gonna see that area really evolve. And it's been kind of a little bit on hold during the pandemic. And um there will be a group of folks working with Cabrillo School to help make sure we get those plants established with a little bit of watering at the very outset, until our rains come and they can get established. And we're looking to uh some grant opportunities for interpretive signage to educate the public about what is a Bio-Swale, and to educate the public about our pollinators and how the plants will support the pollinator um insects. So that was very exciting and fun. Um, I know there was something else in beautification that I can't think of right now, but I'll, when I think of it, I'll update you at the next opportunity in two weeks. And that is all I have. Councilmember O'Neill, did I see your hand go back up really quickly? No? Okay, then I'm gonna give it to Mister.
Kind of ignore my hand unless you see this one, because it seems to be going up automatically tonight. When you see this, that means it's legit.
Okay, so then, city manager Woodhouse, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, Mayor Protem Beer, and council members Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I have a, a few announcements. I wanna start out by calling attention to some upcoming meetings with some of our partner agencies. Uh, first, the San Mateo County Let's Talk Housing, along with Home for All, are kicking off a four-part series to better understand housing challenges in San Mateo County. The series is called Creating a More Affordable Future, a webinar and discussion series. On Wednesday, the thirteenth, at six P M, is the kickoff meeting about why affordability matters. And the webinar requires registration, so folks can register at letstalkhousing.org. So that's one meeting. The, the four-part series extends uh between Wednesday and December first. Spaced out uh through that time. The, the second upcoming meeting is a session that is going to be about sea level rise, coastal erosion, and flooding on the San Mateo County coast line. It's being put on by One Shoreline and the, and the League of Women Boaters. And that meeting is actually Thursday night, the fourteenth. Uh, it's a busy week for these night meetings. Uh, seven o'clock P M to eight-thirty P M. And there's a whole host of presenters for that meeting and discussion. And our uh Public Works Associate Civil Engineer Ryan Marquez will be presenting about the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project at that meeting. The next announcement that I have is uh that, and, and especially, uh, you know, today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I wanted to call attention that the interpretive panels have been installed at the community center in, in front of the uh Aloni Portola Heritage Trail mural there. And uh there are two panels. It's, it's, it's been a long time, it's been at work for a while, but they're finally completed and installed. Uh, and they're sort of of the design that uh the county approved for interpretive panels along the whole uh, the whole trail, the whole heritage trail. And uh one tells an Aloni story, and one tells an explorer's story. So if you're down in the Lindemar area, stop by the community center and, and check out those panels. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that uh our, our annual process that Public Works Engineering Staff engages in uh is to uh recertify the blood insurance discount so that those homeowners who have blood insurance will continue to get a fifteen percent discount that they, that they do get. So that's good news, and great job to the engineering staff that complete my.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we will move to the item formerly known as item thirteen, now known as item ten, which is to adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the County of San Mateo for establishment of an edible food recovery program consistent with California Code of Regulations.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, it, we need item nine, the public hearing?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I jumped ahead. Yes, we do need item nine, the public hearing. Pardon me. Let's go back. Public hearing, which is an introduction of an ordinance to approve Development Plan D P eighty-three dash twenty-one, containing a master use list for the Fairmont Shopping Center located at the intersection of Hickey Boulevard and Gateway Drive. In finding adoption of the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, Planning Commission recommended approval of the development plan with modifications by a vote of six to zero on September seventh, twenty-twenty-one. And that is file number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-three. We have Christian Murdock to present the staff report, and we are also happy to welcome Samantha Hauser from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I didn't mean to skip you. I apologize for that.
Not a problem, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members. Deputy Planning Director Christian Murdock. I'm joined this evening by Commissioner Samantha Hauser, as the mayor has mentioned, who is the Planning Commission liaison for this item. I'm also joined by contract planners Jacob Garcia and Aaron Ackman from Good City Company, who assisted the planning department with processing this application. Mr. Garcia is going to continue with the staff report.
Great, thank you. All right, it's a pleasure to meet the um, the mayor um and the city council tonight. Um, the item before you, uh, before the city council tonight is the consideration of a request for approval of a development plan containing a master use list in accordance with the provisions for the planned development zoning district for the existing Fairmont Shopping Center. The application was submitted by the property owner, G R I Fairmont LLC. Next slide, please. The uh project site is a seven-and-a-half-acre contiguous site consisting The uh project site is a seven and a half acre contiguous site consisting of five parcels. The site is located at the corner of Hickey Boulevard and Gateway Drive. Uh located within the Fairmont neighborhood, the project site's general planned land use designation is commercial and it's zoned P D planned development. The surrounding land uses are primarily multifamily residential housing to the north, west, and south. Other commercial uses are located to the south at the intersection of Hickey Boulevard and Gateway Drive. The Skyline Boulevard, uh State Route thirty-five roadway and public right-of-way bound the Fairmont Shopping Center to the east. Uh most surrounding buildings are one and two-story structures. Next slide, please. Um as the project background, the Fairmont Shopping Center was developed in the nineteen sixties. And under prior ownership, it went, underwent significant renovations between two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen. The Fairmont Shopping Center contains approximately a hundred and seven thousand square feet of building floor area, and there are currently twenty-nine tenants. With most space dedicated to retail, restaurant, and personal service tenants, uh a Safeway grocery store and Rite Aid pharmacy are the anchor tenants in the shopping center. And the project site currently provides three hundred and thirty standard and sixteen disabled parking spaces for a total of three hundred and forty-six parking space, spaces. Uh next slide, please. Uh the city's current planned development zoning regulations in the Pacifica Municipal Code were enacted after the development plan or the development of the Fairmont Shopping Center. The planned development zoning regulations require city council approval of a development plan to specify the allowable uses on the property's zoned P D. And how, um however, staff has been unable to locate any prior city approval of a development plan for the Fairmont Shopping Center to designate allowable uses. As such, in order to facilitate efficient operation of the uh shopping center, the new owner is seeking approval of a development plan to ensure its operation of the Fairmont Shopping Center is compliant with the Pacifica Municipal Code. Next slide, please. The request before you tonight, the applicant has proposed a development plan that would uh serve as a master use list for the Fairmont Shopping Center and is included in Task Force B of the staff report. And the master use list is primarily based on the C two community commercial zoning district permitted and conditional uses. However, the C two zoning provisions were last comprehensively updated nearly forty years ago. And since then, the types of uses associated with the successful shopping center has changed. And as such, the pro- uh proposed master use list also contains additional provisions to reflect contemporary and anticipated uses within the shopping center. The applicant has prepared a parking and transportation study to come from the development plan application and will be discussed later in this application. Uh next slide, please. Uh as I have just stated, the proposed master use list is based primarily from the permitted and conditional uses of the C two community commercial zoning provisions. Um I'll take some time now to summarize how the master use list differs from the current provisions. Uh first, for health and fitness uses, C two zoning standards require all health and fitness uses to obtain a use permit. Whereas the proposed master use list would allow smaller health and fitness use up to five thousand square feet in floor area as a permitted use. Therefore, a use permit approval would not be required. Um health and fitness uses, uses in excess of five thousand square feet in floor area in each unit would continue to require a use permit. Uh such uses would be limited to a total of twenty-five thousand square feet for the entire shopping center. Uh for childcare facilities, the current C two standards require a use permit for all childcare facilities. The proposed master use list would allow, as a permitted use, childcare facilities with up to thirty children and not more than two such uses in the entire shopping center. Larger childcare facilities or more than two within the shopping center would require approval of a use permit. For vehicle and boat sales, current C two standards require a use permit for vehicle and boat sales. Uh the proposed master use list would allow such sales as a permitted use, provided they occur only indoors. Um for restaurant and food-related uses. Um and it appears the lights in my house just went out, so I apologize for any change to my lighting um that you may see. Uh for restaurant and food-related uses, an overall cap of twenty thousand square feet would be applied to the center. Uh C two standards do not include an overall floor area limitation for a property. Uh for outdoor seating, the master use list would establish standards for outdoor dining and allow a small amount of outdoor dining areas permitted use for each food-related use. Currently, all outdoor uses in a commercial district require use permit approval, including outdoor uh dining areas except as permitted by the city's outdoor activities permit process enacted during the COVID nineteen public health emergency. Uh the count, the city council is scheduled to consider citywide policy related to outdoor seating areas in the coming months. And the proposed outdoor seating provisions in this development plan are being considered before the council um has determined an appropriate citywide policy. For renewable energy structures, uh the master use list would allow solar panels, uh energy storage devices such as batteries, and electrical vehicle charging stations and other alternative energy structures. While not discussed in the C two standards, renewable energy structures are commonly found in similar shopping centers and are increasingly required by the California Building Standards Codes. And lastly, uh for e-commerce pickup, the master use list would allow for e-commerce pickup areas. This type of use was not contemplated in the C two standards, but is appropriate in the Fairmont Shopping Center because it provides a convenience for visitors to the shopping center and those living in the area. Secure e-commerce pickup areas uh could be a particular convenience to residents in the several multifamily residential developments in the vicinity of the Fairmont Shopping Center uh because they may lack sufficient areas to conceal e-commerce deliveries uh to deter theft. Uh next slide, please. Uh in support of the development plan and proposed master use list, the applicant submitted transportation and parking study, which is available on packet page one hundred and sixty-one. Uh this study consists of a vehicle trip uh generation analysis and parking capacity study. The vehicle trip analysis examines uh potential traffic impacts while the parking study examines whether adequate parking is available on site. The analysis concluded that three hundred and forty-six existing off-street parking spaces can handle the projected increase uh in off-street parking utilization during both weekday and weekend peak hour conditions under the hybrid scenario, which was a scenario that included a mix of land uses expected to occur at the site over time. Um therefore, staff does not anticipate an adverse impact in off-street parking availability in the master use list um if the master use list is approved. And um additional parking components have been incorporated into the development plan and include a fifteen-minute parking requirement. Uh this uh application includes proposal to utilize eight to twelve par- existing off-street parking spaces for ride-share pickup and drop-off in app-based delivery services. Um there's a fifteen-minute parking limit for these spaces. They are short-term parking. Um this is short-term parking component reflects the increasing popularity of ride-sharing and on-demand uh delivery services by identifying appropriate locations for such uh services within the existing off-street parking area. Uh there's also ongoing transportation study requirements. Uh while the transportation study did not identify any potentially adverse impacts from the master use list in terms of vehicle trip generation and off-street parking capacity, the development plan would include a safeguard provision to enable the city to uh revisit the traffic and parking concerns as necessary in the future should any operational challenges relating to parking occur. The proposed development plan includes a provision to allow the planning director to require the property owner to conduct a parking study periodically, but no more than once every two years. In the event the planning director has determined that the combination of uses authorized in the development plan is creating conditions detrimental to surrounding uses in terms of the off-street parking demand. Uh next slide, please. Um these, this item, it was uh discussed at the regularly scheduled September seventh uh Planning Commission meeting uh and where they adopted a resolution to recommend that the city council approve the development plan. However, the Planning Commission expressed concern of potential firearm and ammunition sales that were within the master use list, uh while also making certain childcare facilities are permitted use. There is also concern regarding the safety of children given the nearby schools. Firearms sales are currently allowed in the uh the C two community commercial and C three service commercial zones of the city um with approval of a use permit and subject to other standards as provided in the Pacifica Municipal Code, uh section nine dash four point two three one six. The Planning Commission recommendation to remove firearms and ammunition sales from the listed conditional uses in the master use list has been incorporated into the draft ordinance that contains the development plan presented before you today. Uh next slide, please. Um so the required findings were uh pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code, section nine dash four point two two zero six. The project requires Planning Commission consideration and recommended approval of the development plan to the city council. City council approval is required to adopt the development plan and master use list for the Fairmont Shopping Center by ordinance. And next slide, please. And uh staff has determined that this project is consistent with the required findings as outlined in the staff report and find that the proposed development plan and master use list would support continued successful operation of the existing Fairmont Shopping Center. Minor additional uses would be allowed at the shopping center based on current market conditions and evolving commercial uses since the last comprehensive update of the city's C two commercial zoning regulations in nineteen eighty-two. And the proposed development plan and master use list would be consistent with the general plan and staff has not identified any adverse impacts that would occur from the development plan's approval by the city council. On your screen reads the formal recommended motion. And uh city staff and the applicant team is available to answer any questions, should the city council have any. And the applicant team has also prepared a presentation for the city council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, did you have any questions at this point, or shall we hear from the applicant team? Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you very much. Um I, I didn't catch it the first time I was reading through the material, but I caught it this time, the ongoing transportation studies. I was just wondering what the trigger is for um the studies to happen. What's, is there a threshold? Or is it somebody said, from the community says, we think we need one, or what, what, how does that get triggered?
Thank you, councilmember, councilmember Aaron Ackman, Principal of Good City Company. We set it in so that the community development director could be the one that determines whether or not that study happens. It cannot be requested more than once every two years, so it won't be an overly burdensome, burdensome item for the applicant. But if we, if the director hears something from the community or observes something on site that shows that it's not, that parking or traffic's not being uh can, being consistent with what was predicted in the study, he or she could call it up for an additional study and potentially additional conditions on the project as well.
Thank you very much.
Councilman, Councilmember O'Neil.
All right, um I wanted to, I, uh question is, I know we did do some changing with our ordinance for marijuana in terms of moving them all down, I think, to Rockaway. But does this do zone, the previous owners of Fairmont did not, as a corporate policy, did not sell want marijuana stores, uh retail marijuana. Um do, is marijuana covered at all under any of this new provisions? Like, could they apply for a conditional use permit or whatever?
Yes, Councilmember O'Neil. So this shopping center is located in what's known as the Cannabis Overlay Fairmont District. And so it is eligible uh under the city's municipal code for a cannabis retail operation or testing operation to locate uh in the shopping center. However, uh as you noted, uh the city has issued all six of the allowable cannabis retail operation permits. And so at this point in time, uh no cannabis retail operation would be eligible to pursue an application. Cannabis testing operations could, however, uh pursue a cannabis activity permit uh at this point in time, regardless of whether or not the council approves this uh development plan. We have uh made reference in the proposed development plan uh to the potential for a cannabis retail operation or testing operation to be undertaken in this location, simply for consistency's sake, uh to harmonize between the two, to avoid confusion in the future. Um so if that's something that the council wished to change, we would have to have that discussion, not just in the context of the development plan proposed tonight, but also in amending the city's overall cannabis ordinance to change those provisions as well.
Okay, now, I, in looking at this, um we're doing this here for Fairmont, basically updating everything to current regulations and common practice in the twenty-first century. However, when you go down to um Lindemar, a lot of these same things are already happening. Now, was that done under the COVID emergency declaration? Or has Lindemar just not bothered to update to the current regulations and are doing this quote illegally?
Uh well, without more specifics, uh what you're observing, Councilmember O'Neil, um I will just remark generally that the Lindemar Shopping Center is owned C one neighborhood commercial. Um it was previously owned by the same owner as the former owner of the Fairmont Shopping Center. And staff had similar conversations with that property owner uh about updating a master use list for both centers. The zoning mechanisms would be different. You know, in this case, it's the planned development P D zoning district. In the case of the Lindemar Shopping Center would be a master use permit under the C one zoning or even a rezoning, as we uh suggested as a, as an option to the C two zoning district. Um if you're referring to, you know, outdoor seating, for example, that very likely has been undertaken under um the city, the city manager's uh emergency outdoor activity uh permit program. Uh and that's not something at this point in time that will be available on a long-term or permanent basis. And that's uh really subject to the separate conversation Mister Garcia mentioned about the council considering, considering a citywide policy potentially for those types of outdoor seating areas.
Well, what kind of triggered it for me was the fact Lindemar did, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but they have the electric charging station behind the building. And that's now being allowed at Fairmont, but it's, you know, it's already being done in Lindemar, and I was just curious, did they just go ahead and do that?
So the city already has an ordinance in the municipal code in the zoning provisions related to electric vehicle uh parking spaces and charging stations. And so it's clear outside of the P D uh planned development zoning uh provisions that that is an allowable use in, in a location like the Lindemar Shopping Center. What we're doing here is, again, introducing language because the P D is meant to be very precise to eliminate confusion as to what's allowed and not allowed uh by making specific reference to it. And also accounting for the fact that other types of renewable energy structures beyond EV charging stations could be considered at some point in time, um whether it's, you know, vertical wind turbines uh or uh larger battery installations for more continuous renewable energy when renewable energy sources like solar, you know, may peak or, or drop off to a, at a certain time of day. So this, this is meant to encompass more than electric vehicle charging stations, but that is encompassed within the renewable energy structures uh description.
Okay, thank, thank you, Christian.
Okay, we have a presentation from the applicant. Is that correct, the owner applicant? Did I hear that correctly?
That is correct. The applicant does have a presentation.
Yes, and so the court will need to bring over the uh, the applicant representatives.
Great. And then after we've heard that, we will have, be sure to have public comment on this item.
Actually, Madam Mayor, we should open the public hearing formally. And then, and then hear from the applicant first and then public comment.
Should, I'm sorry, could you restate that?
We should open the public hearing now, if you're ready to hear from the applicant because his testimony is part of the public hearing, and then take public comment.
And then hear from the applicant.
Video was not on.
I'm sorry.
We need to open the public hearing now, if there are no further questions from councilmembers. And then ask the applicant to speak and then public comment.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. All right, so we will open the public hearing if there are no further questions from councilmembers. No? All right. And then we'll have, hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. This is Greg Zeig with First Washington Realty. This is the time to speak. I'm learning your system.
Yes, please go ahead. I understand your presentation for us.
I do, uh and we'll, and we'll make it very quick. Mister Garcia did a fabulous job uh briefing it. Um. So let's get Greg Zeig, First Washington Realty, uh seventy-two hundred Wisconsin Avenue, Suite six hundred, Bethesda, Maryland, two zero eight one four. Um as described earlier, when we uh were in due diligence for this property um a few years ago, we were looking for the development plan and it came up that we just couldn't put our hands on it, even though it was in a P D district. So really what we're trying to do is, is get the documents together so we can operate this property effectively for the long term. Um and we really appreciate everybody's time tonight. Commissioner Hauser. Um, and we really appreciate everybody's time tonight. Commissioner Hauser, thank you for joining us. Mr. Murdock, thank you. Uh, next slide, please. As Mr. Garcia mentioned, right, constructed nineteen sixty-six, about seven and a half acres, twenty-nine tenant spaces and a little bit over a hundred and. A hundred thousand leasable square feet. Next slide, please. We did purchase the property uh from the prior owner in August of twenty nineteen. I actually visited with the staff that fall. To try to build this plan. I was not aware we were going to have a twelve-month pause uh during the process. But it is important to note as far and it's noted in the traffic, uh, but it came up at the planning commission. That all these traffic studies and parking studies were completed uh prior to uh. The COVID pandemic and retail uh changing um in Q two of twenty twenty. We are uh a little bit below ninety-three percent occupancy rate. It's about two hundred and twenty jobs uh at the. Or at the shopping center, and as uh Mr. Garcia mentioned, Safeway and Rite Aid are our anchor tenants. Next slide, please. So we started uh looking for the PD. We couldn't locate one, both our zoning, uh, local zoning attorney and and coming to the uh. To the city. So using the C two zoning as a starting point uh is great. But there are quite a few conditional uses that are very normal for our, a shopping center like ours. And so what we attempted to do was just move some items from the conditional use side to the uh master use side. We didn't add any uses. Uh, there were some items um that are still on the conditional use side. It came up during the discussion about marijuana sales. Those are on the conditional use side. Our understanding is it made sense to keep those on that side as opposed to modifying uh. You know, modifying that list, but we have no intention of. Having a marijuana retailer. Uh, we have around twenty-five hundred retail tenants nationally, a hundred and five properties. We do not have any uh marijuana sales or testing facilities for that matter. Uh, next slide, please. We do need uh or are requesting flexibility for future market conditions. It really simplifies the approval process for tenants. We've had uh two cases during our ownership where uh smaller non, you know, non-national. Um, tenants wanted to look at space in the shopping center, but they were on the conditional use side. And due to the the time and cost of that process, they end up going somewhere else. And so what I'm spending my time and and effort on is to get to work that process through. Uh, with both the planning commission and and the city council, so that we can keep the center vibrant in the future and and actually keep uh. Keep those tenants with us at our center or not keep them, but get them to become new tenants at our center. Next slide, please. It is important to know that there is no proposed grading, there's no construction, there's no modification of the parking. The existing sign program is still in place. We really feel this is a documentation exercise as well as. Um, we are new owners uh in your community and and uh it's been great working with staff and and the planning commission and. Now getting to meet the city council, it we feel it's important. Uh, I'm not just doing it for that, but it is important to to get to know. The uh, the city as well. There is a new master track uh useless as it outlines some new outdoor dining standards. That are very much in line with some of the emergency protocols that that were put in place and then authorization for the short-term parking spaces. Next slide, please. You know, I think I we hit on all this. There are some square footage restrictions on the most intensive uses. Uh, you know, um, small format fitness under five thousand square feet, childcare and uh and restaurants. And then there are also some specific locations for certain uses, such as the Firestone Auto Service um and others. I do want to uh, at this point, make a a very clear comment. During the planning commission, it came up about firearm sales and and recommend not allowing those. We support that provision. Uh, that was on the conditional use side. We weren't asking for firearm sales. Uh, it was just on the list, and so we kept it on the conditional use list, but we support that provision and we will not have. Uh firearm sales and we don't, similar to uh my comment on marijuana. Um, once again, a very large portfolio nationally, no firearm sales uh specifically. Also, at the request of city staff, we did include housing as a future potential use. Um, because housing, I guess, is permitted at other centers. It is not our plan to build housing. And was really only included to be responsive. We envision the shopping center being very, very similar to how it is today for the long term. Next slide, please. Um, we did do a a fair amount of effort with the traffic and parking sensitivity. Determining square footage caps, several land use scenarios. Mr. Garcia mentioned the hybrid scenario. That was our term for. You know, you know, one of the ideas, not ideas, but just on a math basis was what would happen if we did X amount of restaurants? Or what would happen if we did X amount of gyms? So what we did is the hybrid scenario is some additional restaurants, some additional fitness. None of those could go up all at the same time, but it's the idea of what that would look like. Uh, the difference under worst-case scenarios really is quite minimal. Next slide, please. And with that, I want to thank you again for your time this evening, and I'm available uh to answer any questions along with. Um, urban planning partners who Brandon Northard and Curtis Banks, I see Brandon. I I'm not sure I see Curtis, but we we have local uh urban planners that have been helping us with this process and they're available as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Council members, are there any clarifications or questions that you had for this applicant at this time? No, I'm seeing none. Then I would like to open public comment. On this item for the public hearing, Mr. Montomayor. I don't see you right now, but I have a different. Oh, there you are.
Hi, yes, we have three hands raised. While we wait for a quick coffee to pull up the timer. Um, our first speaker is Vicky, followed by Cliff Lawrence. And I'll unmute you, Vicky, once we have the timer pulled up. Hey, Vicky, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, um, thank you very much for letting me speak. Um, I brought this up to the planning commission and I'm reading them out again. Um, only because uh when I brought it up at the planning commission, it was said that, yes, that the the. The folks that did the study are experts in their field and should know how to do these studies, but the studies do not. Um, account for everything that is required in a transportation analysis of this kind. The traffic study uh provided does not include a number of elements required for such a project. Existing trip data collection methodology was not provided. Where did where did the baseline data come from? Parking utilization data collection methodology was also not provided. Traffic and conditions around the center have changed considerably since nineteen sixteen. Numerous studies. Um, numerous traffic issues exist around access and ingress to this facility. Some of the data collection done was during done during school break and not relevant. Normally, traffic study uh data is collected during school periods, uh when kids are in school. It don't during break. Um, the report does not include existing traffic conditions and the project impact to existing. Excuse me, uh, it does not include existing traffic conditions and the project impact to existing conditions. Off-site analysis for site access and circulation have not been provided or reviewed. Traffic count, peak hour, turning movement counts, lane geometry and traffic control information and impacts have not been provided or evaluated. Traffic intersection warrant, uh, excuse me, traffic intersection warrant analysis must be conducted. For both intersection at Hickey Highway, Hickey and Highway thirty-five, as well as Hickey and Gateway. Uh, VMT analysis not provided, which, by the way, is the law now. Um, street queuing backup impacts. Highway thirty-five should also be reviewed. Um, Hickey Gateway and Highway thirty-five intersection should also be reviewed as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicky. Our next speaker is Cliff Lawrence, followed by Christine Bowles. Cliff, you may now unmute yourself.
Hello, uh, this is Cliff Lawrence from uh West Fairmont. I'm a little bit disturbed here, maybe more than a little bit. Uh, when I read through the agenda document. I thought I read that on this particular item. Uh, cannabis and gun sales were to be exempted, excluded. And now I hear you talking about conditional. What is this? This is what what is this bait and switch? Why aren't these items listed at? You know, un, you know, unconditionally removed from the list that they would take some special authority to get. You're placing them in a position where it's going to be easy to slide them in and. This, this is a very uncomfortable feeling for a person in the public that has a concern about their community, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Cliff. And our final speaker is Christine Bowles. Christine, you may now mute yourself.
Um, thank you. Um, again, this is Christine Bowles. I live in Manor and regularly shop at many of the stores and restaurants um in the shopping center. Um, I asked some questions during the planning commission hearing related to parking, as I've been here at times when it's been difficult to find parkings. And I've actually had several um older neighbors who who live near the project um call me. Asking me to speak up because they do not have the technology to to come before you tonight. Um, but they also wanted to raise traffic and parking issues. Um, and then there's a public comment letter in the staff report from a tenant who's also complaining of existing parking and traffic issues. Regardless of the the new uses that are being considered that will increase those demands. I continue to have two concerns that the profit parking and traffic studies were not properly done to really assess the situation. Um, first of all, the the planning staff report says that the existing condition study was taken, was undertaken during COVID. Though the owner said it was actually before COVID, so I'm not sure about that. Um, the dates they told us the studies were done, as Vicky said, were actually during the President's Day holiday week when many families travel. So I fear that the the data may have been severely undercounted and and I don't believe that's a proper time, as Vicky said, to to do to take that. Data. Secondly, the staff report says that five hundred parking spaces are required per the municipal code. Only three hundred and forty-six spaces are currently provided on site. But if you look carefully at the plan, forty-two of those spaces are actually on the back of the property off a separate narrow driveway off of Gateway. Which also serves as the delivery dock for Safeway. There is no way to access these spaces from the main parking lot, and there's no signage to direct people out to the street and back. Out and around to these spots. I drove around this area a couple of times recently and found most of these spaces to be empty. So technically, there are only three hundred and four out of five hundred required parking spaces available to the public. Which is only six percent additional capacity, according to their numbers, which may not be accurately taken. So the question I have is, does this still support the new use demands being requested that the with the master use list? The study says restaurants, for example, are the highest generators and increasing an increased parking demand by nineteen percent. I would recommend postponing this project approval until the parking and traffic studies can be further evaluated. So that the community most impacted by the project can be assured that these changes will not cause further traffic issues and queuing onto Hickey. Um, at the planning commission, I also encourage the new owner to consider adding housing above retail. As these flat sites near public transportation are ideal for increasing density to help meet arena numbers. And and our demands for for housing is especially affordable housing in the town. I'm hoping that the planning department can continue to work with the owner to encourage this type of redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine, and I see another hand raised by Betty Duran. Betty, you may now unmute yourself.
Hello, everyone. It's Betty Duran. You know, I was delighted to read the uh Pacifica Tribune dated September the fifteenth, and I'm quoting. The development plan discussed at the recent planning commission meeting, but the commissioners decided not to allow. Excuse me, gun stores and cannabis. I was thrilled. That's what it said, but that's not what happened. I I would uh ask that council look carefully and remember who this neighborhood is and what it is that we stand for. And we're very much against certain things, and one of them is cannabis and guns. And we were happy to see the that uh planning commission acted on our request regarding the gun sales. I also note that the applicant is really not in a position or it doesn't seem to. To be in a position to want this type of thing with a hundred, I think he said a hundred and five properties. And none of them have uh gun stores or cannabis, and nor is it something that they strive to have in their shopping centers. I think it's important to listen, not just to the applicant, and I thank you for being here this evening, but to the community. He said, he stated he'd like to get to know the city better. My suggestion to you, Mr. Zeig, would be that you actually get to know the neighbors better. Also, we're we're a community that is a a a long community. We're we're different from the north and the south. And the north is very much opposed to some of these things, and one of them is cannabis. It's also beer and wine and and guns. We're just different. So I ask you, first of all, that you be available to us, so that you're not so difficult to find. Not that you've been difficult now, but that in the future that we may contact you as a community. Uh, that we have some contact with you through an individual in the community, not necessarily someone on council, maybe someone in the neighborhood. So that we can address any concerns that we have with you. And I want to add lastly that traffic is a nightmare up here. Especially within the neighborhood. I happen to live just on on Hickey, so and very close, so I'm not as impacted, but I see it. I have to, I have to figure out what time I want to go up to the shopping center just to pick up my meds. So, uh, Mr. Zeig, I would ask that you really engage with this community. I'm thrilled that you're asking us questions. And I hope that you listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Madam Mayor, I'm not seeing any more hands raised at this time.
All right, then, that closes public comment. And I see a hand from council member Big Stick and from.
We want to close the public hearing formally.
And we are, and we are closing the public hearing before we go to comments from council member Big Stick. And Mayor Pro Tembeer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if I may ask two questions. Um, the first one might be more appropriate for Commissioner Hauser and Commissioner Hauser. Thank you for joining us this evening. Um, I miss working with you and the rest of the commission, so it's good to see you here and have a brief moment to reconnect on that level. Uh, my question for you is because there seemed to be a little bit of confusion from the public regarding um guns. It was my understanding that the commission voted in no uncertain terms that guns were not to be recommended. And the recommendation before us tonight is to approve this without um the availability of any gun sales whatsoever. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. Um, so there were um six commissioners present. Uh, we had one absent and we voted unanimously to um recommend the uh development plan. Without allowing any firearm sales, ammunition sales, anything pertaining to firearms would be barred.
Thank you very much. Um, my other question is, and it, please forgive me if I'm pronouncing it incorrectly, Mr. Zeig. Who I do not see currently in my Hollywood squares. So I want to make sure you're still there before I answer that question. Oh, there you are, I think. There you are. Um, am I pronouncing your name correctly, first of all, Mr. Zeig?
Yeah, Mr. Big Stick, you are. Mr. Greg Zeig. Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. And um, I'm not sure if this is a question for you specifically or the rest of your team. I know that you were um very responsive during the original planning commission meeting, so it occurs to me that you might have some responses from. Some of the comments you heard, but my um question specifically before you might give those general comments. Has to do with the transportation study issue and um it's my understanding and I can't really communicate with um most of the attendees. So forgive me if I'm mistaken when I say this, Ms. Sunstrom. But it's my um understanding that Ms. Sunstrom has extensive uh understanding and knowledge in transportation. That's her field, in fact. Um, again, to the best of my recollection. And so usually when I ask a question like this. I'm asking it very specifically for my understanding and anyone who might think like me, and usually when I ask a question like this, I ask for it to be explained to me as though I'm a four-year-old child. In this particular instance, I'm going to ask for the exact opposite. Um, and again, the initial question. Um and again, the initial question might be for a member of your team or whomever. I'm actually going to ask that um. If possible, we have an explanation as though you're communicating directly to Ms. Sunstrom or anybody who. Say has a doctorate in transportation study. And the first thing I heard from her was baseline data. And after that. I I continued to follow less and less as details became more specific. Um and so I I would favor right now if somebody would please offer an explanation about transportation study that was done. To address those specific concerns from somebody whom presumably has extensive knowledge. And the reason that I I'm asking it in this way is because, as was noted earlier about ongoing transportation studies. Um knowing this community as I do, I have no doubt that somebody who does have extensive knowledge. Might decide to go to our um planning director to the point where that trigger happens and we get to hear. Um of a new transportation study and trying to avoid such a happenstance. Please, somebody with extensive knowledge, tell me more about transportation studies and how they were done in this particular instance than I ever wanted to know.
Thank you, sir. I am gonna defer. And I guess I could, do I want to defer initially to Mr. Garcia? Do you know the folks that kind of reviewed it and and made the presentation? Or I can go to uh, I'm looking for either Brandon or Curtis. There's Curtis. What what would you prefer, sir?
Oh, whomever has the knowledge, um just talk shop to me like somehow I could understand it, even though I won't. But um please just give me the details.
Councilmember Vic Sick, um I'll take a first attempt at responding. This is Deputy Planning Director Christian Murdock. Um so the applicant prepared the analysis that staff requested from them. And we acknowledge this is not a full transportation impact analysis, as one might see for a new development project. Um what we needed in in order to prepare our staff analysis was an initial indication of. Uh the level of uh the increase in intensity of parking demand and trip generation. That might result from, you know, a likely mix of land uses. Um should that have represented um some alarming level of increase relative to the surroundings? It's possible staff could have um required the applicant to prepare a more in-depth traffic impact analysis. With that said, uh the information that we reviewed in the the report that was provided. Did not suggest that there was likely to be a significant increase uh in overall use of this intersection. There are modest increases in um expected trip generation under um a conservative land use scenario, in my opinion. Uh and I think uh it's important to juxtapose that with the existing condition, which is it's been a shopping center for. Uh you know, nearly sixty years. And uh currently, we have very little control over the mix of uses because we're without a development plan. And importantly, with approval of this development plan, we do get a mechanism to evaluate and require additional transportation mitigation measures. If and when the mix of uses uh potentially uh presents some sort of adverse impact to the surrounding. Community in terms of off-street parking utilization or on-street parking utilization. So I think uh if you look at the the broader picture, we are in fact getting greater control and ability to monitor and. Ensure that we mitigate potential issues that could arise in the future that currently uh we cannot foresee uh right now.
Very good. Thank you very much. And um. Again, I I just favor as much data as possible right now. Um anyone else who would like to speak on it? From my understanding, that's more than enough, especially in light of the fact that apparently we can. Do a transportation study anytime we deem it's necessary. Um but I I would like, again, as much data as can possibly be offered. Um especially to the concerns of somebody whom has apparently made a lifelong study of this.
The the one additional uh note that I'll add is the parking study was done on four different days. It was done, two of the days were within, was after President's Day in twen- in twenty twenty. Um was that week, was on February eighteenth and nineteenth. President's Day was the seventeenth. And then they also did a parking study uh two weekends later, or one weekend later on February twenty-second. And then the following weekend on February twenty-ninth. So they were spread out throughout the month of February in twenty twenty. And actually, the peak parking happens on that with Saturday. Uh you know, Saturday afternoon between twelve and one, and those were done later in the month, not as close to President's Day.
Thank you very much. And um just to re-ask one more time after um. My long rambling about wanting so much data. Uh Mr. Zeig, if you'd be so kind, um any general comments you'd like to offer would be welcome.
Um, no, sir. I mean, you you've heard from uh from two folks that explained it much better than I could. And I appreciate Aaron providing those exact dates. I was actually just pulling it up on my on my other screen here. In case I happen to make a mistake that, but it did happen prior to the. The COVID pandemic and during what we felt was a a good representation of the shopping centers parking requirements. Uh the only other item uh I would just like to comment is. Whatever, whatever mechanism we need to do to kind of not allow. At least the firearm stuff. My understanding that the planning commission was due to city council ordinances, et cetera. There was. There was a reason possibly that didn't get included in the way it was presented to city council, and and I I'll defer to other folks on that. But we as a entity and and certainly at the Fairmont Shopping Center would would uh. Certainly agree not to have firearm sales or marijuana sales on our conditional use permit list. We are not requesting that and and would be. We agree to it at a planning commission. I will agree with to it very clearly tonight again.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer?
Um yeah, I just wanted to address the cannabis, and I believe you just did. Someone mentioned it could be a bait and switch. Can maybe you can explain how that could not happen? Maybe, Christian, you want to tackle that one?
Absolutely, Mayor Pro Tem. So I I'm not sure what bait and switch there may be um alleged in this case. Um the planning commission did discuss cannabis as it discussed firearms and ammunition sales. Um and as Commissioner Hauser mentioned, the the planning commission very clearly uh acted to disallow uh firearms and ammunition sales. And it's not included as a potential permitted or conditional use in the development plan or master use list that's being presented to you tonight. Regarding cannabis sales, um there is a broader um policy discussion to be had if the council wants to to do something. Um to change uh those regulations. The city did have a robust public process several years ago to implement its cannabis regulations. And as I mentioned earlier, um the city's municipal code does currently allow. Uh cannabis retail operations and testing operations in this location. And the reason that it's mentioned in this development plan is simply for consistency's sake, to avoid potential confusion in the future. But the city's zoning zoning regulations are clear that due to its location within a cannabis overlay district. It is eligible upon approval of a cannabis activity permit for operation of a cannabis retail operation. That permit would require a public hearing and an approval by the planning commission, subject to appeal to the city council. And so there is uh no opportunity for that to sneak in without anybody knowing. And I think that's important to note. The same process would also apply to a cannabis testing operation, which could occur at this location. Um and would require a public hearing uh just the same.
Yeah, and I think it is clearly stated that this isn't something that that the owner would like to have on on the premises. So just that's really clear to everyone, and thank you for being so clear with that.
Oops, sorry. Um are there other questions from council members at this point? Oh, Councilmember Big Stick.
One last question. And uh again, uh Commissioner Hauser, thank you for being with us tonight. I just would favor any further comment you might want to make. Was there anything you think was left out or something you think we should know or? Anything you think might be useful?
Yeah, I I appreciate that, Councilmember Big Stick. Um, you know, I think um I think we really appreciated that the applicant. Um is trying to bring the shopping center up to current standard. And um you know, that he and and his team are trying to help smaller tenants through a process that could be burdensome. Um, one of the things that we also uh got uh explained to us was the process for conditional uses. Our use permits would require a full CEQA analysis, and I think that also provided some additional comfort. Um for any of those uses uh that were on that conditional use list.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I'll make a motion if there's no other questions.
I see no other hands or indication that council members have questions or comments, so I would love to hear that motion.
I move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica approving a development plan DP dash eight-three dash two-one. To authorize a master use list for the Fairmont Shopping Center located at the intersection of Hickey Boulevard and Gateway Drive. APN zero-zero-nine dash four-four-zero dash zero-seven-zero. Zero-zero-nine dash four-four-zero dash zero-eight-zero. Zero-zero-nine dash four-four-zero dash zero-nine-zero. Zero-zero-nine dash four-four-zero dash one-one-zero and zero-zero-nine dash four-four-zero dash one-two-zero. File number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-three.
Sorry, this includes the exception of uh the. The uh firearms and ammunition sales.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Big Stick with a second by Councilmember O'Neil. I'll call the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Votarlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And item number nine passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right. Now we will turn our attention to the item that was formerly numbered thirteen. In our agenda tonight, and now is item ten. Which is to adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the County of San Mateo. For the establishment of an edible food repu- recovery program consistent with California Code of Regulations. Title fourteen, division seven, chapter twelve. Short-lived climate pollutants and authorizing the city manager to execute the MOU. And finding MOU exempt from California Environmental Quality Act CEQA. We have a staff presentation by Director of Public Works Lisa Peterson.
Yes. That's correct. Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, Councilmembers Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. We also have with us tonight Jack Johnson. He's from the San Mateo County of Sustainability. And he is their senior sustainability specialist. So tonight, staff is requesting that the council adopt the memorandum of understanding that is included with this report. For with the County of San Mateo for establishment of an edible food recovery program. This is for compliance with Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which is related to methane emission and organic pollutants. As part of your report, you have an attachment memo. This memo was provided to council in September. Gives a broad overview of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. And uh in a nutshell, it is a law that was passed in two thousand and sixteen. And it is to reduce organic waste in order to reduce methane, which will help address climate change. And some of the bill's elements are need to be in place or are supposed to be mandated to be in place by January first of twenty twenty-two. And the goal of the bill is to have a seventy-five percent reduction in organic disposals by twenty twenty-five. So some of the elements of the bill in order to help this along are to require organic collection service from residential. And um establishments and business establishments. Also uh requiring jurisdictions and cities to procure recycled organic products. And also uh develop an edible food recovery program. So the discussion tonight is really focusing on that edible food recovery program. The other elements of SB thirteen eighty-three will be brought to council and discussed uh at a meeting in November. So the Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three does require counties to take the lead on planning for food recovery. And the San Mateo Office of Sustainability, the OSS. And and Jack, in particular, started this process back in twenty eighteen and did a broad outreach. Uh to the different cities in San Mateo County, um other stakeholders. To make a determination on how San Mateo County could best comply with these requirements that were being put out. In Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. And ultimately, it was decided along with the cities that one program that was under the umbrella of the county. And run on behalf of the cities would really be the best way for all of the cities in San Mateo County to be able to comply. Uh with these requirements that were coming down from the state. And this is, of course, great news for Pacifica because we're a little city. And for us to try to implement an edible food recovery program all on our own would be costly. And you know, it's also, you know, would be complex. So um the county's program would be basically an expanse of the grocery recovery. That's currently being provided by the Pacifica Resource Center and also Second Harvest Food Bank. The city, in order to be part of the program, does have to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the county of San Mateo. And they also are requiring that we pass an ordinance. Um and that ordinance would be brought to council in November. The um council, I mean, the county at this time is subsidizing Pacifica Resource Center in order to expand their service. And at one, some point in the future, the county subsidy um would go away. And at that point, a fee would be charged to the different food generators that are out there. Now, the way that the bill is is starting off is the 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 food generation collection would start from grocery stores. And from uh food wholesalers. That would be starting in January first of twenty twenty-two. And by twenty twenty-four, you would add on large restaurants and also hotels. So if the council does decide to adopt the memorandum of understanding tonight with San Mateo County. It would become effective on January first of twenty twenty-two. As discussed, council would be back, I mean, staff would be back to council in November to bring the ordinance forward. Um at that time and discuss the ordinance with you that is associated with this memorandum of understanding. That's the the end of my report. I'm here to help answer any questions. And of course, we have Jack here. And uh he is an expert on the edible food recovery program at the county, so he's a great resource for us to have here tonight. We also have our city attorney who can help provide uh help with any kind of legal questions regarding the memorandum of understanding with the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Peterson, and welcome, Mr. Johnson. I apologize for not introducing you earlier. I had lost track of my notes for the moment. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. It's my pleasure.
All right. Councilmembers, did you have any immediate questions on this item, or shall we go to public comment first? It looks like public comment. Mr. Montemayor?
Yes, you have one hand raised by Cliff Lawrence. And Cliff, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. This is Cliff Lawrence, uh Fairmont West. When I heard that, my first concern is, what's the chargeback to these organizations? Because you say you're going to charge them. Okay, what what are you going to charge grocery stores? What are you going to charge restaurants? Is this going to be repressive to the form that's going to be counterproductive? Can you add more light to that? Thank you.
Uh we don't yet know exactly what the charge is going to be currently. Um I'm sorry. Do you want me to reply to that?
No, not not currently. All all questions need to go through the mayor. Thank you.
That's okay. No problem. I just want to make sure we um have all of the public comment. And then we'll close public comment before we come back. Mr. Montemayor, are there other hands raised?
Yes, we have Kimberly Williams next. Kimberly, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, I also have a question for Jack, just in terms of of this program. Would it be also um compatible and in compliance with the disposable foodware? Um service ordinance, food service where ordinance. Um that limits um single-use plastics. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. I am no longer seeing any hands raised, Madam.
All right, then we will bring it back. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And we did hear two questions. I heard two questions uh in regard to cost. Um potential cost to the businesses and the um entities that are responsible for this. And with regard to uh single-use plastics ordinance. So if you can comment on those items, Mr. Johnson?
Sure, um probably. Sure, probably the easiest one is the single-use plastics. Pacifica took the lead on that, uh, really early. And our office, uh, either picked up that ball or was running it at the same time. But a lot of the jurisdictions in the county have adopted that ordinance now, so that's going really well. And th- this is completely compatible with that. Uh, what we're doing in Pacifica and what we're, uh, doing throughout the rest of the county now is an expansion. Of what Pacifica Resource Center was already doing in conjunction with, uh, Second Harvest, which, um, is rescuing groceries from grocery stores and supermarkets and wholesalers. And redistributing them to the public, uh, who need them. As to cost, there, it's expensive. Uh, currently, um, the grocery stores and supermarkets are either composting that material. Um, or landfilling it. So they're already paying somebody to take it away. Um, eventually, they're going to have to pay somebody to take it away for human consumption. That is a requirement, a state mandate. We can't expect Pacifica Resource Center or other nonprofits to do that for free. You know, they have to pay for vehicles, fuel, uh, insurance, uh, drivers, admin staff. The county is, has been subsidizing it in Pacifica for two years. We will subsidize it for another two years. But eventually, there's going to have to be a revenue stream to make it self-sustaining. If the, the legislation, um, says there are all sorts of different mechanisms, and, and there are a lot of options for figuring it out. We thought the fairest way was for the generators themselves to pay for it through contracts. If that doesn't work, there could be, um, uh, other means considered. Um, but right now, they're paying for it through their rubbish fees. Um, there are other options too for savings. Um, there, they, they could see a cost savings. Um, through the fact that they're not throwing it away any longer, and there are tax savings too, that we intend to work with them to realize. When, when you donate edible food to a nonprofit, um, you're eligible for a tax donation at the federal level. And we intend to be recording the donations that people are making so that they can realize those benefits. But, but I can't tell you what the fee is because we don't know what the costs are yet. We don't, we are not at full growth.
Okay, thank you for that. Council members, did you have other questions on this item? Council member O'Neil? Oh, you're muted at this moment?
Sorry, um, I remember reading the staff report, but does this include schools also? That schools will have to bring any leftovers somewhere?
Me?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, there are two different tiers, and then they come in to di- different phases. The first tier, uh, starts in January. Um, it's grocery stores, supermarkets, and, uh, food wholesalers, and also big tech. In two years after that, it will be institutions such as hospitals, medical facilities, and schools that have actual onsite, uh, food facilities and cooked meals. They will not be able to, um, throw edible food away. They will have to contract with someone to, uh, take it for human consumption. Or, or not generate it in the first place. There's another way around it. You can not generate it.
Yes, council member O'Neil.
As a, as a follow-up, okay, you said that, you know, the county, the same two years, they're presently, they're subsidized in the Resource Center and other, um, agencies similar to that. But in the end of two years, that they're probably going to be cutting that back. Now, um, the, the agencies still have needs for personnel for counseling, et cetera, and, you know, guy and all that. How, is this almost a cut in the social service net, um, in, in two years?
Well, sir, we, we, and the, the fees that will be charged to the generators will create the revenue stream for the ongoing, um, services. I- i- and if those aren't sufficient to pay for the edible food recovery, then we'll have to come up with some other means for paying for it. But we, we will not require Pacifica, Pacifica Resource Center, no, and no other core service agency will be required to cut some other service to, to pay for edible food recovery. If edible food recovery isn't sustaining itself through the fees it charges to the generators, then the generators will have to pay through some other means. Probably through their rates.
See, the problem, I don't see how you could measure the sustainability of this program if you're going to cut this because, you know, like you have a head of lettuce, okay? And Safeway gives you a head of lettuce, and then you give it to somebody else. How do you measure the sustainability of the program that it is cost-efficient and meeting that quota before you start cutting core agencies?
I'm afraid I don't understand your question, sir.
How do you measure the sustainability? Safeway buys a head of lettuce from a wholesaler. Safeway pulls it, gives it to you two days before it, they have to pull it off the shelf. The Resource Center then gives it to an individual that comes to the food bank, okay? How do you measure that sustainability? I just, I'm trying to see from a business point of view, how is that measured to try to, so that you're not infringing on the revenues and expenses? Of the, the core services of the core agency?
Well. I, I, I don't know how to answer that. The, 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 the Pacifica Resource Center offers this as a service, just like recology offers. Recology currently, recology of the coast, I believe, is your hauler. Um, they, they are taking this food away and either putting it in the compost or putting it into the landfill. And they're charging Safeway Grocery Outlet, um, Oceana, I think is one of your markets over there. A fee to do that. Well, instead of that very same food going to that. Landfill or compost, it's now being picked up by Pacifica Resource Center and taken to humans to eat. And they're going to charge Oceana and Safeway and Gershi Outlet a fee, just like recology does, to do that activity. And.
Okay, now, now, now I get it. You're, you're, in addition to Safeway giving the head of lettuce, they're also going to be charged twenty-five cents, fifty cents, whatever the amount is. To the resource, by the resource center to collect it.
Yes, sir. We have structured edible food recovery to mimic the recycling and composting and rubbish collection that goes on today as a service. Because that's what the state has instructed us to do. Ed- edible food recovery is just like recycling, composting, and, and waste collection. It's another waste diversion tactic to combat climate change and also to feed people. And that's why the core service agencies, we, we tasked them with it because they were already in the business of feeding people. They didn't have to do it.
Yeah, I know. I, I understand where you're coming from. Hopefully, this works out better than the recycling programs and, than, that we have now.
Yes, sir.
That business model didn't quite work.
I, I will say this, people are always hungry. Recycling is not always, there's not always a market for recycling, but there are always hungry people.
That's true. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, other questions from council members or comments? It sounds to me like we are going to be seeing, th- this is going to come back to us in November, if I understood correctly, in terms of our specific resolution. And ordinance change. And then based on what your report was, there are dates that are rolling out. Um, so there's the first one hitting in, in twenty twenty-two, and then another one following. So I'm imagining that there are going to be updates for council members on items such as what council member O'Neil was asking about. Like, what is a methodology and these kinds of questions as the program becomes more clear? Is that a reasonable assumption?
Yes. Oh, sorry, Jack. I can, I can let you go, but I would just say that from, from staff's perspective, we would definitely be giving council updates. I mean, I think, um, it's just important to, to know that, you know, this is new for everybody, right? This is, we're rolling this out. So this is, we're all kind of saying, okay, how's this going to work? And just like everything else, it's, we never know how it's going to work, but it always eventually does. And hopefully, this one will work well. Um, I, we'll, we'll make sure that we are providing updates to council as, as we're getting them, as we understand, you know, you know, how these things need to be implemented. And then with that, I'll, I'll throw it to you, Jack. I know you had something to say too.
CalRecycle requires, um, quarterly reports. And one of the obligations that we took on in the MOU is to provide you all the data. Um, so that your, that your monthly report or your quarterly reports, um, will be timely. And there are also annual reports to CalRecycle we will be assisting you with as well. Now, generally, we assist staff and staff does that outside of your council's understanding, I would think. But they may also make a, an annual report back to you all, but you could ask them for that at any time. But we intend to be very communicative to, uh, your, to your staff. And another positive benefit to the legislation and to the data i- is that y- y- you can include it on your climate action plans. Uh, there is a positive climate benefit to keeping, um, organics out of the landfill. Um, because it generates, well, methane is not generated, so therefore, that's a reduction in greenhouse gases. Um, so your climate action plans will be positively affected, um, through this activity, and you ought to be able to see that, um, um, in, in your annual reports about the climate, your climate action plans too, I assume.
Uh, council member Big Stick, did you have your hand up?
I did briefly. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you, Mr. Johnson, for being here. It's very good to have you here with us tonight. That's all.
Thank you.
All right, council members, if there are no other questions on this item, I think we would be, we need to vote to adopt. I'm trying to see, um, adopt the resolution. So if there's.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
The move to adopt the resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the county of San Mateo for the establishment of an edible food recovery program. Consistent with California Code of Regulation Title fourteen, Division seven, Chapter twelve, short-lived climate pollutants. And authorizing the city manager to execute the MOU and finding MOU exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second.
Heard a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Beer with a second by council member Big Stick. Uh, start the roll call vote with council, council member Big Stick.
Yes.
Council member Vado Las.
Yes.
Council member O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
That item passes unanimously.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Thanks. All right, council members, we're on to agenda item ten A. Which is amending administrative policy number one, city council agenda and format process to require the reading of Aramatis Aloney land acknowledgement at the beginning of city council meetings. We have a presentation by Christian Murdoch. I believe.
That, that would be me.
Oh, I'm reading the wrong thing. Pardon me. I got my agenda all mixed up. Welcome, Director Perez.
Good evening, Mayor Beckmeyer and City Council Member Michael Perez, Director of Parks, Beaches and Recreation Department here. Um, this, as you know, the city's received inquiries about, um, whether the council would consider adopting a formal land acknowledgement statement. And, uh, several council members had requested the city manager places on an agenda topic. Uh, so that's what we're here to discuss tonight. Land acknowledgement statement can raise awareness about histories that are often suppressed or forgotten. Formal land acknowledgement is intended to share an expression of respect for indigenous peoples, recognize their enduring relationship to the land, and raise awareness about marginalized aspects of histories. Land acknowledgement statements are typically read verbally, um, at the beginning of meetings, and in our case, would be at, at the beginning of a city council meeting. Um, other organizations do have them, and they read them at the beginning of their meetings. They can also be put in, in printed form and, uh, placed on an organization's website. The Aramatis Aloney people are the original people of Pacifica, and their ancestral village of origin is located along Calera Creek. Archaeological evidence shows that the Aramatis had lived on the peninsula for more than ten thousand years before it was settled by the Spanish in seventeen sixty-nine. Um, and if I could ask staff to put up the, um, statement? We have a slide with the proposed statement on it. So the, the following, uh, land acknowledgement, uh, before you tonight was drafted by staff based on the review of other agencies' statements. And with the input of Dr. Jonathan Cordero, he's founder and executive director of the Association of Aramatis Aloney. And I, I think he was going to try to join us tonight, so I'm not sure if he's here, but if he is here, he would be happy to answer any questions as well. Um, so I'll, I'll just read the statement. Um, the city of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Aramatis Aloney peoples, who are the original inhabitants of San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Aramatis Aloney peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Aramatis Aloney have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place. As well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As uninvited guests, we affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples in which to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Aramatis Aloney peoples. Um, administrative policy number one, which is, uh, the city council agenda and format process. Would need to be amended to add a step requiring the mayor or does need to read this proposed land acknowledgement statement following the roll call at regular and special city council meetings. Um, city manager also recommends that the statement be placed on the city's website. Um, there's other local agencies and boards, um, who have adopted it, many in, in San Francisco. Um, the Aramatis Aloney, uh, land acknowledgement include but not are limited to the San Francisco Human Rights Commission, San Francisco Board of Supervisors. Their Recreation and Parks Department, San Francisco Library Commission, the Commission on Environment in San Francisco, Presidio Trust, Fine Arts Museum of San Francisco. And City College of San Francisco and San Mateo County Parks Department. Um, staff is also recommending that the following amendment to the resolution, um, to bring clarity to the legal context for the acknowledgement statement be included. Um, that would say, whereas the city of Pacifica land acknowledgement process does not have any legal force or effect. It is solely designed to pay respect to the indigenous people that occupied land in Pacifica before settlement. And that concludes my report. So you take the slide down, I guess, or I don't know if, if you choose to leave.
Sorry, I was having a little technical moment there, um, as I'm trying to add a power cord. There we go. Thank you. Um, all right, so we do, I'm sure council members have comments on this, and I see that we have hands raised. So I was going to propose that we go to public comment first, unless there's clarifying questions. No? Okay. Mr. Montemayor?
Mayor Beckmeyer, we have three hands raised. Our first speaker is Laverne Paul-Bay Sheila. Laverne, you may now meet yourself.
Hello, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, I want to thank everybody for, um, letting me speak tonight, Mayor Beckmeyer and city council. Um, I want to thank you for creating the Aramatis Land Acknowledgement. As an enrolled member of the Omaha Tribe of Nebraska, it brings a sense of welcoming and a. As an enrolled member of the Omaha Tribe of Nebraska, it brings a sense of welcoming and a positive step towards. Uh, better relations. There are so many days when I'm grateful that my family lives in this beautiful town. Whether I'm coming down Sharp Park Road on a beautiful day or just smelling the ocean air. So I actually think about this quite often. The Ramat- the Ramatis peoples, you know, this is their ancestral homeland and they lived here before it was Pacifica. And even before it was the United States. They are the original stewards of the land. They raised their children here, lived and died here. Today, the Ramatis are still here, even though there's only one family lineage left after colonization, genocide and genocide. Today, some land acknowledgements have resulted in better relationship with communities and American Indian tribes. By the Pacifica City Counciling, acknowledging this is an act of respect while supporting the original history of Pacifica. I just wanted to also note that. Over the past fifteen years, I've also been an advocate for American Indian children. And I know how difficult these um complicated topics can be. I just want to make a note that. Doing what is right isn't always easy and sometimes you'll even be standing on your own. American Indian history is United States history and Ramatis history is Pacifica history. The only thing I had to just comment on is. The words uninvited guests kind of just got a reaction from me. And so I, you know, if a Dr. Cordero, you know, approved that, you know, I would say yes. Um, otherwise maybe a a more positive term might um be more accepting from all. Thank you.
Thank you, Laverne. Our next speaker is Sheila, followed by Cliff Lawrence. Sheila, you may now unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Um, okay. Um, okay, great. My name is Sheila Merlo. And my daughter attended Valley Mart School and was in Leslie Hazelwood's fifth grade history class last year. And we discussed how she could be a social ally as the lessons she was learning. About early colonialism left her feeling that she was only encountering the Native American culture within the context of destruction. As a parent, it's my responsibility to show my children that doing right is more important than being right. As a massively mobile world civilization, we are collectively redefining what it means to be from a place. Are we placeless people then in a region that has forgotten its past? What does it say about our society that so many of us have no idea who lived here just three centuries ago? We can all, as Californians, no matter whether we're first or second or fifth generation locals. Acknowledge the legacy of the Aloney people. We are all here now, living on the land, and thus we are all inheritors of its past. When we consider the people who came before us, we begin to consider how we'd like to be remembered by those who will come after us. Injustice is real. It's your responsibility as Pacifica City Council members to embrace our position as an inclusive community. To honor indigenous people here, past, present and future. And we should pay respect to local elders of the Aloney people by enacting a practice of land acknowledgement before your city council meetings. California's legislature passed a law enacted as the AB nineteen sixty-eight Tribal Land Acknowledgement Act of twenty twenty. Land acknowledgement is a transformative act and is meant to confront our place on native lands. And to build mindfulness of our present participation in colonial legacies. Show our community that doing right is more important than being right. I ask that you please consider land acknowledgement to be added to your opening and ceremonial matters. It makes it much more meaningful to have this discussion on the second Monday in October Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I wanted you to know that this all began from the mouth of a fifth grader at Valley Mart School. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sheila. And our next hand that's raised is Cliff Lawrence. Cliff, you may now meet yourself.
Thank you. This is Cliff Lawrence from West uh Fairmont. I'm glad to hear our acknowledgement of the indigenous people, not only on this particular day. This is important for Americans, it's important for Canadians, it's Australians. This is a problem for all people. In our advanced cultures. Now, the the one other thing I want to mention, I have no objection to your motion this evening. Except I would like you to take note that recently. That point between uh Rockland and. Uh, Linda Mar has recently received. An uh national designation from uh USDS. Uh, with a tribal name. Which I don't think you've considered. And uh. I I would ask you to uh inquire into that. And then uh incorporate that into your plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. And I have one more hand raised from Christine Bowles. Christine, you may now meet yourself.
Um, thank you and and good evening again, council. I I I think this um is beautiful and I want to thank you for taking the the leadership. To do this, it's um, it's an important reminder um that our time here is temporary. And that we who live here now have the responsibility for the stewardship of this beautiful place that that we call home. That um others have stewarded in the past um so that we can enjoy. Um, I'd also like to ask us to be more mindful of um misappropriation of native names and um and tribes. I I don't know how it happened and if if it um was reviewed by the Aloney tribes. But a- as you know, the the development at Harmony at One was was renamed Aloney Point. And I don't know, that does not sit right with me that this gated development. Um, that is blocked, blocking access of of Pacificans. Um, that is for the super wealthy um be given this name. Anyway, I encouraged us to 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 think about these kinds of things and and speak up. Um, when we see this kind of misappropriation. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. And Madam Mayor, there's no more hands raised at this time.
Thank you very much. We will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council. I see Councilmember Big Stick has his hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Um, and I really, really liked that comment, Ramatis history is Pacifica history. Thought that was beautiful phrasing. In regards to Mr. Lawrence's comment, um, Director Perez. I'm not sure about the Rockland to Linda Mar tribal name that he was referring to, but you might look into it and see if. The bearing it has on what we're discussing for a future conversation. The one comment that I wanted to discuss a little bit and as far as I know, uh, Dr. Cordero isn't here tonight. But that language about uninvited guests that um Ms. Villa Lobos referred to. I also kind of paused when I read that and the point was well taken and then validated by. Somebody else with a perspective that. Validated. So anyway, I I was just kind of contemplating the language a little bit. And um as alternate language, what I came up with was as beneficiaries of trespassers upon this land. Rather than as uninvited guests. Certainly, my family history um suggests that we weren't anywhere near this place when. The original peoples were um. You know, genocided and whatnot. So as beneficiaries of trespassers upon this land, to my mind. Might be preferred language and if Dr. Cordero were here, I'd ask for his input, but. That's what I have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, wait, yeah, thank you. I didn't know if my mic was back on. Um, I did see Dr. Cordero in our attendee list early in the meeting. So I'm sure he wasn't able to to continue uh into this hour. So my question to council is. How you feel about this um language issue that's been brought up? And if it warrants taking a little bit more time to evaluate it? Or if there's an opportunity for amending the language, does it make sense to look at it more closely? And then bring it back or what what is the thinking? Councilmember O'Neill.
Um, I don't have any problem um doing this, however, I am concerned that it. Jefferson High School District is attempting to build some like fourteen hundred housing units and over a hundred. Approximately a hundred of those units are going to be affordable housing. And the people that are trying to stop that are invoking that this is native land. And that, and I don't want this to be construed in any way, shape or form. That the Pacifica City Council is against affordable housing. And the housing project in Daly City, which is going to benefit. A district that has twenty-five percent staff turnover every year. And lowest wages on the district, uh, one of the lowest wages in the peninsula. So I do not, I am supportive of the concept, but at this point in time. That project is still under attack by certain individuals. And I would like to be sure that this is not construed as supporting that endeavor to stop that project.
Okay, thank you for noting that. Um, Councilmember Big Stick has his hand up again.
I also would like, we put the screen screen share on with the verbiage if we're gonna start amending language.
Sure. Okay, Council Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and um I agree one hundred percent with Councilmember O'Neill. I don't think that that's what we're doing tonight. Condoning whatever might be going on in Daly City um with the school district that. It, you know, so um Director Perez led in with um some language for the resolution. That I think kind of addresses Councilmember O'Neill's concern. Um, Director Perez, if you'd remind us of that. Uh, amendment to the resolution language that you referenced earlier, um, that might be helpful right now.
Sure, it it would be to add the whereas the city of Pacifica land acknowledgement process does not have any legal force. Or effect solely designed to pay respect to the indigenous people that occupied land in Pacifica before settlement.
So I'm I'm not sure of the nuance of what's going on.
That's that's language, to be clear. That's not part of the land acknowledgement. That is part of the resolution. So that would not be added on to what you're seeing right now. That would be part of the resolution that's in your packet.
So Councilmember O'Neill, when I hear that language as a part of the resolution, to my mind, that affirms that whatever's going on on the other side of the hill. Um, we're not suggesting. That the problem that you're indicating gets augmented further, if that made sense.
I also, I also wanted to mention that. They have met with the elders of the Aloney tribe and the Aloney tribe has acknowledged that they found no. Evidence, you know what I mean, that it's not a meaningful site to them type of, I don't know how to phrase it right. Because it's getting late and I'm tired. Okay, so um, you know, and that's what I'm saying. And I do don't like the words as uninvited guests also.
Yeah.
So I would, yeah, it it uh, you know, but um, I would. I just want to be sure, people grab slogans or things that are passed and stuff like that. And all of a sudden they embrace them as the truth and that's common throughout history. And I am just concerned that I do not want to go on record as um doing that. I mean, if we need to pass a resolution supporting the housing project, I'm all for that. If we want to put that on an agenda.
That, that sounds like something we could do. Um, when we write in this land acknowledgement or when we. Uh, put into this land acknowledgement, we honor the Ramatis Aloney people. And what you're saying is the Ramatis Aloney people have specifically said that that piece of land um. Uh, is is there for the school district to do what they should be doing with it? It sounds like by us uh adopting this land acknowledgement, frankly. We're reaffirming the words of the uh Aloney who have made that recommendation on that matter over the hill. So I, it just, to my mind, solidifies that um there should be no problem in what we're doing tonight. And um, just so I bring it up again with the acknowledgement in front of us. And I'm trying to, so instead of um as uninvited guests, what I'm suggesting is. As beneficiaries of trespassers upon this land. The idea being that we're benefiting from things that happened that um. Really were not good. As opposed to we are the uninvited guests.
Mary had her hand up.
Yeah, I can't see, I'm sorry.
Mary had her hand up.
Can I, can I ask you to take the language down, please, again? I'm sorry, I keep putting it up and taking it down, but I need to see the council members. Okay, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem, please.
Oh, thanks. Um, well, for starters, I just want to say I'm I'm proud that that we're gonna be doing this. I, and it's it's super important and um. Yeah, I I just feel like this sense of. Kind of almost like relief, like we're finally acknowledging this, you know? And so I'm fine with the uninvited guests, but I'm also, if you guys want to talk about other language, that's that's fine with me, too. And Councilmember O'Neill, I I appreciate you getting some language into our notes about that. Um, it's important. I don't have any suggestions, though, for language.
I know.
I I actually have a suggestion. I'd remove the uninvited guest part and put in there. As beneficiaries of the previous stewards of this land. I don't have it in front of me now for me to, well, I guess I'll I'll pull it up. I'll pull it up and do it, you know what I mean? But um. Let's see here, um, as the, I, as beneficiaries of the previous stewards of the. Of the Aloney people. Period, you know, then carry on. We wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders and relatives of the Ramatoshi, Ramatis. You know what I mean, Aloney people.
No, I, you know, and this is the problem with trying to edit something in in a Zoom meeting. Um, with multiple inputs, when we can't look at the language together, et cetera, even though we have the packet. You know, we don't have the opportunity, I'll remind the public, of to have a discussion about these things between council meetings. Like, we could ask questions of staff. Um, one council member could speak to one other council member, and this is, I agree with Mayor Pro Tem, this is really important. This came up in goal setting, this came up at other points and was asked for. And so um, I don't, I I don't want to belittle this process. And I don't want people to feel like we're just, you know, wordsmithing here. It's important to me that the language is solid and that we're all comfortable with it. In a sense of pride, as Mayor Pro Tem said. And I really appreciate the public comment from um Laverne Villa Lobos, who it's not. You know, it's public knowledge that she's a member of our school board. Um, and it it it, for me, it bears even more weight hearing from her on this item. So um, I don't want to rush it. In other word, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't want to rush, like changing a couple of words here or there and just be done with this. I see the city manager has um turned on his camera. Did you have something you wanted to indicate?
Sure, I I have two comments. Um, one was, we did consult, Director Perez did did uh. Communicate with Dr. Cordero about this and, uh, you know, interestingly, one of the things that he said was. That, you know, this is, this is our statement, not a statement that they want to write for the city. So um, I I I think. So um, I I I think that's a a principled uh response that they have on that. Um, I I have a modest and and maybe simple suggestion about the uninvited guest sentence. And that is just to remove that clause. So that the sentence would then say, you know, the first, the other sentence would end, reside in their traditional territory, period. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to um, et cetera. And 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 not really dabble in in the in the clause that would lead that sentence, so.
I like that.
Me too, I like that.
I will entertain a motion if there's no further discussion on this item.
So moved with the amendments suggested by the city manager?
Second. About staff to the resolution, I'm sorry, um, Councilmember O'Neal, if I may make a friendly amendment, that we also make the amendment with the uh recommended language to the resolution as recommended by staff.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I amend my resolution, yeah.
Can I second?
Okay, for um item ten A as amended, moved by Councilmember O'Neal and seconded by Big Stick. Uh, start with the roll call vote, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember uh, uh, Bader-Las.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And item ten A passes as amended uh five to zero.
Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Yeah, can I have on on the agenda next um meeting, a resolution supporting the housing for the?
Actually, Councilmember O'Neal, that that is something that we should I have concerns about that because that project is going to be coming before the council. And so.
It's in Daly City.
He's referring to the Jefferson High School District.
Yeah, it it's in Daly City. Oh, okay.
It's the Jefferson High School District, which covers Pacifica, but the project itself is in Daly City.
Got it, my apologies.
Oh, okay, no problem. So um, I think staff has picked up what I wanted to have in a resolution, so.
So for a future agenda item, Councilmember O'Neal?
Yeah, I don't think we can do it tonight, so.
No.
Yeah, tomorrow, next meeting, because their meeting is the twenty seventh, I think, of October. I'll confer with Kevin about it.
Thank you, that would be great. Okay, what time is it and where are we? It is?
Break time.
Break time, but it is also ten thirty eight and we have one, two more items to get through. So do we need to make a motion to extend the meeting and then take a break? Or do we think we can do it, take a break and get these done in twenty minutes? I know, I shouldn't ask a multi-part question, Councilmember Big Stick, count me out.
I move we um extend the meeting to twelve o'clock.
I was gonna say eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty.
Just because it was so close last time, I wanted to give a buffer.
Yeah, but we made it, so eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty it is.
A second.
Okay, we gotta vote, don't we?
And the motion uh to extend the meeting to eleven thirty moved by Big Stick and seconded by Beer. Uh, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader-Las.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that passes five to zero.
Thank you, so we will take a break for five minutes. We will return at ten forty-four. Item eleven. Response to the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report. Building greater trust between the community and law enforcement via the Racial and Identity Profiling Act. We have a presentation from um Chief Dan Stidle. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members, I'm Dan Stidle, your chief of police. Uh, so tonight I will be presenting uh the city's response or city's proposed response to a San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report. On July twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-one, the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury released a report titled Building Greater Trust Between the Community and Law Enforcement via the Racial and Identity Profiling Act. Penal Code Section nine thirty-three subsection C requires the governing body of a public agency to respond within ninety days from the release of a grand jury report to the public. Report issued by the grand jury addresses the January first, twenty twenty-two requirement for San Mateo County law enforcement to comply with Assembly Bill nine fifty-three, also known as the Racial and Identity Profiling Act, or RIPA. Data collected on law enforcement stops will serve as a platform via RIPA to address potential bias-based policing issues for law enforcement agencies and communities. Reports specifically address the need for law enforcement agencies to have an adequate plan in place for data collection, reporting, training, policies and procedures development, system testing and data auditing. Report specifies eight findings by the grand jury and eight recommendations from the grand jury. The city must respond to each of the findings stating whether the city is in agreement or not with the finding and to each recommendation regarding the city's intent to implement each recommendation or not to implement. Staff reviewed the the Civil Grand Jury Report, including the findings and recommendations. Of the recommendations, of which there were eight, staff agreed with all but two of them. Staff partially agreed with one of the two and disagreed completely with the second. Staff felt based solely on the grand jury report, two of the two findings in question were deductions not supported by the report. As the report was issued on July twenty-seventh, the city must respond by October twenty-seven. Given the short time between the release of the report and the required January first implementation deadline, the recommendations come extremely late in the planning process. However, I'm happy to report that the city is or will be in compliance with all eight recommendations stated in the grand jury report. Uh, staff has kept the city manager updated as to the progress of the implementation of this important program with the Pacifica Police Department. The implementation of Assembly Bill nine fifty-three began in February twenty twenty with staff regularly attending meetings that were held by the California Department of Justice as well as Sunridge, the vendor for our records management system. Staff began training and using the record management system uh to collect RIPA data on a test basis in June of twenty twenty-one. As of this day, all officers have been trained using the system and have been have have been practicing collecting the data. Live testing of the system began in July of twenty twenty-one and continues today. And we're happy to report that is our intention, if everything goes well without any major hiccups, to go live with our rec with our RIPA data collection on November first of twenty twenty-one, two months ahead of the required start date. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions from the council regarding the uh proposed response to the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report.
Councilmember Big Stick?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Stidle. Um, I read the responses, I noticed we have seven attendees in the audience still who may or may not have read them. Those two specific findings that we're disagreeing with, if you'd be so kind as to just briefly tell us what those are and why we disagree.
Certainly, so uh finding, uh, finding number two, states county law enforcement agencies vary in their degree of understanding of rapid data collection requirements, technological options uh for collecting the data and the need for procedures and training to collect their report and report the data. The law enforcement agencies ripe of preparedness correlates to their understanding of RIPA requirements. So this is a response where we partially agreed with the finding. Uh, staff felt that based solely on the information contained in the report, it is apparent that law enforcement agencies are at various stages of RIPA implementation. However, the city cannot determine based on the report, each agency's level of preparedness and their understanding of RIPA requirements. The whole portion where they begin talking about the correlation of preparedness and understanding the requirements was not supported. Um, it didn't seem to be supported with any facts in the report. The second one that we completely disagreed with, uh, we just said we disagreed with the finding was law enforcement agencies vary in their understanding that implementing RIPA board record board recommendations would build greater trust with their communities. Again, our response to city disagrees, based solely on the contents of the report, there is no substantial evidence that indicates what level of understanding San Mateo County law enforcement agencies have regarding implementing RIPA board recommendations in relation to building greater trust within their communities. Again, um, they appeared to be um feelings or deductions, but uh they, there wasn't any evidence in the in the in the research or in the report that indicated that that's the case.
Thank you very much.
Oops, all right, I think uh what I'd like to do is go to public comment on this item.
Madam Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time.
Okay, seeing no hands, we'll bring it back to council. Any further questions or comments on this item, council members? Mayor Protam?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Chief Stidle, for all of the work that you have been doing and continue to do around this issue and for being um ahead of the game, you know, and it it does build trust. All of this builds trust, and so whether there's data that shows that or not, I'm I'm gonna tell you that it is, it's gonna build trust in our communities and I'm really, really proud of the work that you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate them.
All right, council, this is an action item.
I'll move, move to approve and authorize the city manager to send a response to the San Mateo County Grand Jury Report. Building greater trust between the community and law enforcement via the Racial and Identity Profiling Act.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember O'Neal and seconded by Councilmember Bader-Las, a roll call vote starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader-Las.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yeah.
Mayor Protam Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And item number eleven passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Mary, thank you. And that brings us to item twelve, which is a response to San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report titled San Mateo County, California's Ground Zero for Sea Level Rise. The recommended action is to move to approve the response to the above stated report. And we have a staff report from Tina Wermeyer, Assistant City Manager and Planning Director.
Thank you, Mayor, I wanted to confirm that you can hear me?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, as you stated, on August eleventh, the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury issued the report titled San Mateo County, California's Ground Zero for Sea Level Rise. The grand jury report summarizes findings and recommendations regarding sea level rise, future flooding and coastal erosion that could pose considerable risks to life safety, critical infrastructure, the economy and the county's natural and recreational assets. The report addresses the issue of if the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District, also known as One Shoreline, is on course to adequately address the sea level rise challenge that has been assigned to it and doesn't have the support it needs. The draft response letter agrees with the grand jury findings, including, but not limited to, the need to prepare for sea level rise, the need to revise complex federal and state regulations which delay projects and increase costs. That storm surge and sea level rise threaten the county's wastewater treatment plants and other critical infrastructure affecting everyone in the county. And that One Shoreline is uniquely positioned to augment a jurisdiction's ability to combat sea level rise by its planning, funding, permitting, expertise and guidance. Regarding the grand jury recommendations, the draft response letter indicates that the city will implement them in the future. Those recommendations include scheduling a future council agenda item regarding a continued funding source for One Shoreline once future needs and funding options are understood, willingness and availability to participate in a coordinated lobbying strategy for federal and state regulatory simplification and incorporation of sea level rise policies in the general plan. Regarding this last point, as the council is aware, the city is currently working to update the nineteen eighty general plan, which will include policies related to coastal hazards and impacts to of sea level rise. The city is scheduled to adopt the general plan update by uh March of next year. The co local coastal land use plan approved by council for transmission to the Coastal Commission is still working through the Coastal Commission staff review process with the most recent filing letter response submitted today. The local coastal land use plan approved um uh the approval of that plan was an official action by the city and staff will incorporate the sea level rise policies in that document uh into the general plan. Uh, the recommended action is to approve the response to San Mateo County's uh Civil Grand Jury Report um titled San Mateo County, California's Ground Zero for Sea Level Rise. Happy to answer any questions.
Tina, didn't we uh council meeting last year when there was a formation of One Shoreline vote to some money to fund them? I mean, obviously, it was a starter startup type of funding, but we already took that action and should that be included in this response?
So um I will see if uh the city manager has anything to add, but I believe that the what I read in the report is that they did acknowledge that funding was um, you know, was established by jurisdictions in the county and that it was just a starter fund. So I think that that was acknowledged by the uh the report that the grand jury published.
Okay, thanks, I just didn't want to look like we weren't playing in playing in the sandbox with everybody else, you know?
All right, council members, let's go to public comment and then we can come back. Mr. Montemeyer?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm seeing one hand raised from Clifford Lawrence, followed by Christine Foles. Let's give coffee, okay, uh, Cliff, you may now.
Thank you, this is Clifford Lawrence. Um, I read this and I was uh, I I was applauding the council uh and city for their uh accolades for, you know, we uh approved the finding, we, you know, accept the finding. And then I went back to the original paragraph and I saw that it said, uh, our responses seem to reflect documents, uh, maybe, maybe draft documents. Uh, how can, uh, we're a city, folks, uh, we have responsibilities. How can be be responding to a grand jury with data from a draft document, which is not, has not received any endorsement? Has not become an official document? And now I understand, the document we're talking about is from two thousand fourteen, which, by the way, in the introduction, has comments that date back to two thousand twelve. Now, according to the internet, what I'm looking at, uh, it says, uh, the lifetime of a general plan may run from ten to fifteen years. If you take that and apply that to that draft plan, if this thing had been approved in two thousand fourteen, we're halfway through that plan now. How long does it take to approve a new general plan? What what's going on, folks? Please help me, I I don't understand this. Uh, I'm sorry, but I don't know if responding to a grand jury with something that is, as as far as I know, a draft document in two thousand fourteen is not a document. It has no status unless our city attorney can tell us otherwise. It has no status. So how do we respond to somebody with the gravitas of a grand jury? With something that is this old, seven years old, halfway out of date? Please, please help me out on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Clifford. And I have another hand raised by Christine Bowles. Christine, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening again, council. This this is Christine Bowles. But first I want to express my support for One Shoreline. I I recently heard the director speak and I was so impressed with the collaborative work that they do across jurisdictions involving multiple agencies and such complex systems, such a management team that can sort through conflicting priorities is essential to finding solutions with the greatest public and environmental benefits. Coastal erosion and sea level rise affect all Pacificans, not just the ones living close to the water's edge. As sea level rise projections show our major sewage lines and even Highway One being threatened. I fully support the need for the city to help fund the work of this wonderful organization. I'm concerned that in the grand jury report section on Pacifica, it says, and I quote, "Pacifica's general plan recognizes the importance of global climate change and its impact on sea level rise." I'm confused because our current general plan dating from nineteen eighty makes no mention of climate change or sea level rise. Those were not well-known scientific facts back forty one years ago. Yet this nineteen eighty general plan version, which contains the only local coastal plan certified by the Coastal Commission, is still being used today to review projects. The last I heard, our draft local coastal plan, which the city council adopted, is far from receiving certification from the Coastal Commission. Perhaps staff can comment on the specific issues remaining to be addressed, especially related to hazards and coastal erosion. As I mentioned, there's a there's a project that's being, that was appealed to the Coastal Commission on Danman that's being heard this Friday for those very issues, and they're recommending that they take over review because Pacifica did not properly review these hazards. I'm glad to see in Mr. Woodhouse's response number four that he optimistically expects the general plan update to be adopted by March of next year. But given the fact that the updated EIR will not be complete until the end of the year and there'll be a back and forth process with both state agencies and the public, I fear that this process process could take much longer. Response four also indicates that the local coastal plan will address utility infrastructure, schools, public safety facilities and hazardous material sites, but it's not clear if additional work is needed to update the current draft local coastal plan to include a proper analysis of these items. Could staff confirm if there is information missing? As as this would obviously necessitate another round of changes and review with the Coastal Commission. I see that the Pacifica Plan website calendar has been somewhat updated, but the section for the local coastal plan is actually quite disturbing because it only shows the date of the council approval of the draft in February twenty twenty. So it appears that staff might also be uncertain of the process to come. Should this uncertainty perhaps be communicated to the grand jury judge as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Madam Mayor, there's no more hands raised at this time.
All right, then we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Council members, do you have questions or for staff? Or comments on this item? Councilmember Big Stick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Lawrence seemed to ask for some assistance and a little deeper understanding and a common theme between the two commenters was the notion of a draft document being used in the analysis, if you'd be so kind.
Sure, so we noticed that as well. So first, let me, let me explain my understanding. The grand jury operates independently and it's a it's a, it it's, what's the word? It's late. It is not open to the public, right? And so we did not know that they were going to reference our documents until we saw the report. We felt it was important to note that they were referencing draft documents and we did note that in our response letter, I think in the first paragraph or two. And but I did want to to clarify, and I I think I did that in my oral presentation, that although that is a draft document, what is not draft for for the city's purposes is the local coastal land use plan, which was adopted by the council, and that document, you know, it contains policies related to coastal hazards and sea level rise that were the outcome of a over a year and a half process, community process to develop those those policies. So those documents will be internally consistent between each other. And I'll also note that the civil grand jury report simply requests that cities update their general plan by March if they don't already include policies regarding sea level rise and coastal hazards, flooding, et cetera, and is not making a statement about the content of Pacifica's documents or or anyone else's documents.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vatterlos?
Are any of the, do any cities have local coastal programs with sea level rise fully approved by the Coastal Commission?
I believe, believe that Hapman Bay does.
Okay. So in the whole state, maybe one? Because.
I can't speak for the state.
Right, there are very few of them across the entire state that have been fully approved.
Thank you, City Manager Kevin Woodhouse. Councilmember Vatterlos, last, last that I heard, I I think that there's less than ten that have local coastal land use plans that are updated for sea level rise up and down, down the state, but I don't know the exact number.
Thank you. I don't know the exact number either, so, thank you.
I, oh, did you have something, Mayor Pro Tem? No, okay. I did want to clarify, perhaps City Manager, you could address this. In terms of the issue of responding to a grand jury report, is there a defined timeline that we are asked to respond within? And generally, can you comment on that?
Yes, they usually provide the deadline. I believe usually it might be ninety days, sometimes it might be sixty, but they sort of determine the the timeline for the responses.
Okay, thank you. And I'm gonna just note for the record that this council, prior to Councilmember Big Stick joining us, has been working diligently for the last three years on updating the general plan. It is work that we picked up from a previous council that did not complete the work. So it's difficult to say how long it takes when work has been done on it over time. However, I can say that it is very high priority, if not the highest priority of this council, to complete that work. So I feel that referencing the draft documents is the best that we can do at this time. They are clearly delineated as draft documents, so there's no doubt about that. And thank you, Assistant City Manager, for pointing that out in the city's draft, I mean, the city's response. So I think that we've clarified where those documents are in the process and if there's no further discussion or questions, we could have a motion on this item.
I'll move to approve the response to San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report titled San Mateo County, California's Ground Zero for Sea Level Rise.
Second.
With the motion by Councilmember Big Stick and second by Councilmember Vatterlos, I'll call the roll call vote, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned at.
Go Giants. Go Giants.
At eleven ten P M.
They they won tonight, so it's two Giants lead.
Nice.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.